Good evening and welcome to the February 26, 2024 City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Councilmember Moore, could you please meet us in the
Yes. We begin by pledging allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, could you please take your role?
Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Landau.
Here.
And Mayor Sastarsik.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. It's now time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, except for the public hearing item. You will be given an opportunity to address the council regarding the proposed water and sewer rate adjustments during the public hearing for that item later in the meeting. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak on any item except for the public hearing item are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council, not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Patty Campbell, College Park East. I wear several hats. I'm on the College Park East Neighborhood Association Board. I'm also on the planning commission. Been on that for 14 years. I also sat up there for eight, so I think in all that time, it's safe to say I learned a thing or two. The house on Ironwood Avenue was purchased in 2014 to be part of the drainage solutions to the flooding in College Park East. It's on the north side of Ironwood, backs up to Lamson, and is opposite Elder Avenue, which is midway between Guava and Candleberry. It has a 36-inch drain right in front of it, which makes it ideal for what the city needs to do. Now, I spoke with Sean Crumbie, who used to be the Public Works Director here, and was the leading force behind the acquisition of that house on Ironwood. He said, yes, drainage solutions are expensive for all cities, which is why they are all done incrementally. No city has 30, 40, or 50 million or more to pay for an entire project upfront. That house was purchased 10 years ago, and yet nothing has been done for College Park East since then. There is a drainage master plan for the city. Why wasn't any of it activated for CPE in all those years? Now, money from TOT was supposed to go to the storm drains allocation. Has it? Nope. The rent from the house on Ironwood was supposed to go to a special fund for CPE drainage. Did it? No. That house can now rent for $5,000 a month. Sean said that if all those monies had been deposited, there would be enough for two phases to have already been constructed, and that's a shame that it hasn't been done. In constructing a drainage system, you start at the downstream, end of the pipe, the outlet. You start at the golf course for us, and you work your way from there into College Park East. The drainage work at Candleberry going over to the golf course has already been done. The drainage along Aster has already been done. Now they need to work in Ironwood by that house. The next phase of our situation up in College Park East called for the outlet structure at that 36-inch drain right in front of that house. Sean said it could have been done, and this is in 2016, $16, $700,000 to $1 million, but not $50 million, and that's in today's dollars, and that is completely doable. $50 million is the whole project, and you do it incrementally, so you do it piecework. There are already two 36-inch pipes that cross Lamson and go over to the golf course. The larger pipe at Candleberry is already in place. Now, we are in the drainage master plan, and you cannot arbitrarily and capriciously decide you will no longer do any drainage work up in College Park East. The pump station too noisy? No. If you put it in the house, you insulate it, and it will not be disruptive. No one will even hear it. The plan was to buy the house, tear it down, build the pipes, rebuild a new house, and sell it. Now, a full engineering study was done with alternatives. I suggest you push the sale of this house back for 90 days, dig out that study, and look at the alternatives. There are three to four options with costs. Now, Zeki will have it if you can't find it here. In 2004, the city flooded, and they had Citizens Advisory Drainage Subcommittee formed, and they looked at the TOT, and it was to increase, that was a recommendation by that Subcommittee to increase the TOT for the drainage. And it was that has, you increased the TOT, but you didn't put any of the money towards drainage. Now, I got a lot of phone calls on this today, and somebody said to me, if you're playing poker, you don't throw away your ace. And this is what we're doing here. You can't say we're not going to do any drainage for College Park East because we're in the drainage master plan. So I suggest you pull that out. Let's take a look at it and see what's what. The bottom line is, please, don't sell that house. That is such a key part to solving the drainage issues up in College Park East. Now, we've had people who, you know, had water up to their garage doors. This is not acceptable, and it's also not a contest to see who has a worst drainage problem, Old Town or College Park East, whether you've got
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
You've got a lot of water, and it needs to be taken care of. So we're saying, please, don't sell that. As an aside, my gardener was at the house today, and all my plants down by the sidewalk had to be ripped out because they were dead. There's standing water in front of my house, right by the sidewalk, and that's an inconvenience for me, but nothing compared to what the people further down have had to deal with. So please, don't sell that house. Let's put a 90-day hold on it, and let's dig out the drainage plan and take a look at it.
Your time has expired.
Hello.
Hello. Scott Newton, Seal Beach Lions Club. A little lighter note. Last, thank you very much, council, for acknowledging our 85th anniversary at the last meeting. Our members were very proud of that. It's our 85th year. We're not the oldest club in town, but we're the biggest, and we just love this community, and we'll do anything for it. So throughout this year, we're going to come to some of the meetings, not all of them, I promise, and we're going to give you a little bit of the history of our club that goes way before all of us. Well, if anybody knows these things, then maybe I'm wrong, but here's some things. So in 1939, we started with 47 men. Back then, women weren't allowed. Now, women rule the club, except for me. But some of the founding fathers of our club included Charles Irvine, who was a founding father of Seal Beach, John McGaw, of course, McGaw School, and Dave Stangland, Dave's other place, little restaurant in town, Jack Haley, Captain Jack's, John Nesher, John's Food King, and I know a few of us remember John Food King, Ray Harbor, Harbor Surfboards, Al Lopez, who had your job many years ago as the Director of Public Works, and his street is named after him, Walt Babcock, Walt's Wharf, Dr. Homer, the saddle ear, does anybody remember him? He was a local doctor who birthed people in this town for 20 or 30 years. And then finally, she was not a lion because she was not allowed to be a lion. She was the president of our lioness club in the 1950s, Mary Wilson, who was our librarian at the time. So that's just a little piece of Seal Beach history from the Lions Club, and we're going to keep making it for another 100 years. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Terry. I'm a resident of Old Town Seal Beach, and I'm here in response to a presentation from Caltrans at the recent city council meeting. During that presentation that they did, Councilmember Moore posed a great question to Caltrans. It was, if the left-hand lane is a lot safer, why don't you just do it? And I hope you all noticed that the Caltrans representative never really gave an actual answer to the question. And the real reason why is because if Caltrans was being honest with themselves, the only response would be, they just don't care. And I know that may seem a bit extreme, but the evidence speaks for itself. In 2017, Sarah Kruger was killed at the intersection of 12th Street and PCH by a car turning left from Balboa. The crosswalk at the time looked like this. After the incident, Caltrans implemented a ladder crosswalk, which is, that looks like this now, and it's the same solution from their presentation two weeks ago that they want to apply to all intersections along PCH. However, these ladder crosswalks are only a superficial measure that doesn't improve pedestrian safety. And it's not as if we don't know how to create a safe intersection. Cities across the United States have developed comprehensive safe intersection design guidebooks. Even Caltrans themselves has their own guidebook, which it's not the best, but it has more than just ladder crosswalks. However, I can't fully fault Caltrans because at the end of the day, their main objective is just getting cars through this corridor as quickly and efficiently as possible, and while car safety may be a concern from them, everyone else is an afterthought. This is where the council comes in. Old Town and the Hill are two pedestrian-oriented communities, points of interest in both, making PCH a heavily traversed street by pedestrians. However, PCH acts as a pseudo freeway, bisecting the communities and making these crossings unsafe. Therefore, it's crucial that you all educate yourself in what safe intersections look like and continue to pressure Caltrans to implement them. And I do applaud the efforts of Councilwoman Landau on this subject, however, I would suggest that we think a little bit bigger on this subject. And so before I get to the next part, I do want to mention that I'm not a planner, so I can't say that what I'm going to be proposing here is perfect, but it's a good start. The first thing that I want to acknowledge, I don't know which way to point. I'll go, I'll go one, go one more. The first thing that I want to point is that PCH is way too fast of a street along the corridor with the speed limit between, with the speed limit between 40 and 45 miles an hour. The image on the left shows how speed is a major factor for pedestrian survival, car-related incidents. So I think getting the street down to at least 35 miles an hour would be better for everyone. Yeah, there you go. And then lane widths are one way to control the speed, so getting them down to the right size is ideal. And go too forward now, sorry. So with reducing, with that, reducing the median width, we have enough space to formalize parallel parking and add protected bike lanes along the whole corridor, so we could have a section like that. Go to the next one. Here is what a typical intersection could look like at 12th and PCH. Forgive me for my typo there, but with the formalization of bike lanes and pedestrian, bike lanes and parallel parking, the number one thing that can be done to increase safety is to bring the curb out to reduce crossing distances along PCH. I'll go another one. And then so basically, you can reduce the crossing width by a third. Go too forward now. Next, at the curb extensions, you can reduce the edge radius. This allows cars to make right-hand turns at slower speeds to protect people crossing 12th Street and Balboa. These crosswalks are pulled back, so the intersection allows cars to stop for pedestrians that may be in the crosswalk with, but do not block PCH. Go too forward now. So something like that, and it will as well give drivers a direct view of the crosswalk. And then go two more. As for light sequencing, I think that we have something, we should do something similar to what the intersection of Seal Beach Boulevard and PCH is like, where one side goes, and then go two more. And then after that, the other side goes, to better protect pedestrians as well, making it easier for cars to move through the intersection. Two more. And then lastly, I do want to mention that I just threw in a two-way bike lane up there
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Because I think it's important that we have a network of protected bike lanes linking up with McGaw so that kids have a safe, dedicated place for them to ride their bikes to school. Sarah Kruger is not the last, not the first person that's died because of this unsafe street, and it won't be the last if we don't make tangible efforts at making PCH and this intersection along the corridor safer for everyone, and not until we prioritize safety over throughput.
Hi, my name is Joe Campos. I'm talking about the house on Ironwood. I live on Ironwood. It floods like crazy every time, to the point where if there was an emergency at my house, I wouldn't be able to leave. I have two little kids. Something could happen, and then I think about like not being able to leave. Cars constantly stall out in front of my house. Water has gone up to my garage, and we need to do something about the flooding and how to get rid of the water when it rains. And I think that selling this house on 4197 is, like was stated, is not the greatest idea when we have an option to fix this, and we should fix it. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor Patty Senico, College Park East. I'm here to talk about the house. I want to concur with a lot of comments that Patty Campbell made. 10 years is a long time to not have a solution. 10 years. And since this is in the drainage master plan, it seems like this should have been resolved a long time ago. I want to point out a couple other things on public safety. One of the neighbors was able to share some of the video of the recent flooding a few weeks ago. It was shocking, the amount of water that is there. And not only that, but we got kids playing in the water, and that stormwater is filthy, dirty water. I mean, you shouldn't even be going in it to play. And so the other thing on the public safety is, when the streets are blocked off, if we had to get a fire engine in there or some type of emergency vehicle, the wake from a vehicle that large, even small cars cause a wake, but bringing something that big down that street would cause an enormous amount of flooding. The wake would go right up into these homes. Again, when you close off a street, I mean, that is not the ultimate solution. So I would like to state that I think we also need to do a 90-day hold, go back to the drainage plan, see what happened and why we can't look at the prior engineering studies. The other thing I'd like to point out to you is the federal EPA has announced for California, we now have, we're part of a $5.8 billion investment through the Clean Water and Drinking State revolving funds, et cetera, and this money is for cities with aging infrastructure, old, broken lead pipes carrying water, blah, blah, wastewater treatment plants needing major upgrades, and stormwater infrastructure to manage flood impacts. So there's money coming into California, $5.8 million from EPA, and this is dated February 20th. So why can't we look at, you know, going to EPA and getting a chunk of that money and fix this problem on Ironwood Street so that we don't have to close off streets, close off emergency vehicles, and put our public at risk in College Park East? So I'm sure you guys probably got this, but I think it's really important to get in contact with EPA and see what kind of money we can do on an emergency basis to fix this public safety issue for College Park East. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor, I'm Jody Rubanis, and it's been a few years since I've been here. I was council president for the PTA, and I was appreciative of the work that you did for active transportation and safe routes to school. I probably should have jumped in after the speaker talked about some active transportation issues at a couple of your intersections. I'm here now, and by the way, this is a great place to retire and exercise. I started cycling about two and a half years ago. I biked 10,000 miles last year, but I know, it's really great. I'm healthy. I love it. I love this city, but I'm here because there's some real issues that Caltrans has put before us, and I want to thank a few members who have responded to my emails about the concern. But what I'm concerned about and want to share with you is that the restriping of Anaheim Bay Bridge has made Seal Beach the dubious, given Seal Beach the dubious honor of having the most dangerous area in Orange County for cyclists. Beyond the accident, pedestrian accident that was mentioned before, in, since 2012, there have been five cyclists' deaths just around the Anaheim Bridge area, and that was before the bike lanes were narrowed, and that was with the previous existing conditions. So over the last two weeks, Caltrans has restriped the bike lanes on PCH going over the Anaheim Bridge to accommodate space for workers around the center divider. To create this space, bike lanes going both directions over the bridge have been narrowed in some lanes, less than four feet. The Manual of Uniform Traffic Controls Device, MUTCD, requires a minimum of six feet. Now, I understand this contract for this construction was put out for bid like 10 years ago or something, and it was different requirements, and I think our public works person can address it, so that wasn't in the plan. I've given you a piece of paper. I wasn't quick enough to get it up there, but I show you in some areas going over the bridge that the bike lane is actually less than four feet. And not only the problem of it being so narrow, it's the speed that's going on there, and then the glass and the rocks. So you guys, if you've ridden around Seal Beach, Seal Beach Boulevard, you'll see a biker kind of just swerve in front of you. That's because there's a pile of glass. You run a sure way to get a flat tire, you run over that glass. So there's quite a few issues here going on. We have, and thank you very much for giving us the contact for Caltrans. Several presidents of bike organizations in the area have been in communication with Caltrans, and a few things have been corrected, and I'll just read them off real quickly. They are going to widen the southbound lane to four feet, bike lane to four feet, which is better than what we have now. They're reducing speeds to 40 miles an hour. You saw that they had it posted at 45. It was reduced to 40, which is great. They're providing speed radar feedback signs, which tells the driver how fast they're going. They're also going to add, and I've seen this, they've added already, the electronic signs warning drivers and cyclists that there's a narrow bike lane coming up. My request to you, and just real specifically to you, is we could have these 40 mile an hour speeds posted, but it's not going to do any good unless it's enforced. You know, you see somebody sitting there checking the speed, drivers are going to really slow down. And I am president of a cycling club. I wish there was another way we could go. There's not an easy route. I mean, we have to go over that bridge to do 90% of the routes that we do. It's not like we can just go some other way. I wish there was because I was, last Friday, I was, somebody just buzzed me. They were going at least 60 miles an hour, and then they actually got in front of the lane right in front of me. I don't know, they were irritated, I was in their way, but I know if somebody had been there and they knew that area was being controlled, the speeds enforced, that they wouldn't have gone so fast. And I'm going to ask that you go through your Public Works Director
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Thank you. To ask that the radar signs that tell drivers how fast they're going go between the two bridges so that, instead of way at the beginning, because that's a better place for them to slow down and recognize that they're going too fast. And then finally, the last ask is, street sweeping, get those rocks and glass out of the bike lane in that area. Rocks are really scary, too, because that can take you down. So if we could get those bike lanes clean, make sure that the radar that tells drivers what their speed are
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much, but don't have it in the bike lane. Have it on the side. Thank you.
My name is Satrio Williams. I also live in Ironwood, so I just want to reiterate what everyone else has said and reinforce it, that I lived in the house for 10 years now. Flooding is constant, and it is reliable, and nothing needs to be done. It is blocking traffic. It is damaging cars and property. Last time it rained, I actually found my plant floated to the corner about 6 houses down that I had just planted, so it's causing real damage, and it's disturbing property values, and it's going to make things a lot worse if we don't take care of it now because of climate change, and it's not going to get better. Thank you.
Wei Finali from College Park East. I adamantly oppose the proposed sale of 4197 Ironwood Avenue. I was here last, for the last council meeting as well, talking about the same issue. So College Park East has longstanding and severe drainage issue, especially those streets that feed into Ironwood. Every rainfall transforms our street into rivers, causing damages to residents' property. So I have personally spoken with many affected individuals who have suffered financial and emotional toll of water damage. I myself have to build a front yard, a fort around my house, around, before every rainfall. During the last storm, my front planter was completely submerged, and my backyard had five inches of standing water because it cannot drain to the already flooded street. I do thank the public works staff for placing a water pump in front of my house, but when the drain is completely full and the entire neighborhood is filled with water that is two to three feet deep, the pump is not the answer. So it is unacceptable to allow this neglect of our neighborhood's infrastructure to continue. Without a clear plan for improvement from the city, I think it's unjust to move forward with the sale. I demand transparency from city officials regarding their plan to resolve this flooding crisis and hold local authorities accountable for addressing this longstanding issue. If there's no concrete measures in place, the city must provide flood insurance for homes on the impacted street. I stand firm in my opposition until the city takes meaningful action to address College Park East drainage issue. The safety and well-being of our neighborhood must take precedence. I'll continue to voice my concern until tangible steps are taken to improve our drainage system and protect our community from future flooding. Thank you.
Tom Quinn from Old Town, and I'll be speaking later on the other issue, but the most successful shopping malls in the United States have one thing in common. The owners of those malls, the first place they go is into the restrooms, and they inspect the restrooms and make sure that they have a really good appearance to them. And they kind of look at the expression of the people who go into them and see how their expressions when they come out. And I would invite any of you to go to our restrooms at the pier and take a look at people's happy-go-lucky walking into the restroom from the beach and having a great day on the beach and come out looking like they just saw whatever. It was, it's pretty sad. Now, I understand that we have a proposal to have an attendant that's going to cost $137,000 per. I don't know, that seems ridiculous. Do you know what the mean income is in Seal Beach? Anybody? $75,000. So it just seems a little, a little out of control. I also have to make just a general comment. You know, at the beginning of the meetings, normally we announce the new hires, the people we're bringing onboard, and I found it a little disconcerting that here we're hiring a new executive assistant, and the next thing that comes out is we don't have any money. And I think, I think we're getting to the point where the city can't afford our government, and I think we need to look to alternatives for that. We're 25,000 people, but not really. We have to say we're more like 18,000, and yet the government of Huntington Beach, each individual per capita spends, I think it's $200,000 less than we, I'm sorry, $23,000 less than we do for their government than what we pay per capita. So those are my two issues, and I'll see you in the next discussion. Thank you.
My wife and I live in College Park East, and we, too, are some of those seasonal lakefront property owners. I spoke last year in January or February last year after we had that major flood event where we had water up to our garage door. We're not on Ironwood. We're about five, six houses down from Ironwood, and we had water up to our garage door, only exacerbated by our neighbors driving by with their big trucks, making waves, washing out our landscaping, and then getting water into our garage. One of the reasons why I wanted to come up here is no one's talked yet about the proposed Old Ranch development. Old Ranch is the relief valve for our neighborhood, for the So I want to know what's going to be done about that. So it's safe to say that we're not in favor of that house being sold. I think that we have one of the vital pieces of the puzzle in place now, and it's never going to be cheaper today down the road. I mean, 10 years ago, it was a lot cheaper to fix the problem that we've got. It's never going to be cheaper. I think we really need to pump the brakes on the sale and look at our alternatives, and what are our options? Funding, someone already mentioned the federal government, state funding, bonds, sales tax, maybe an increase in our sales tax, something to help fund this vital part of our community that needs to be put in place. I don't know, I'm just really worried. Every time January comes around, I'm filling sandbags. This last time we had a big storm, we ran out of sandbags, and there was a run on sandbags. You know, we have to get flood insurance. It's just, this is just something that I think that we can fix, and I think we should really think long and hard about getting rid of a possible solution that we've had right now. Thank you.
With the water thing, it's pretty obvious you should not sell the house, you should figure it out. This is a cool segue. Mayor Sustarsik should know, I think she has like a PhD in biology or something, but mushrooms are like 90% water. Maybe you should eat some, you might figure out how to distribute the water correctly. Okay. I, John William Kachiver of Seal Beach, California, officially opened the Escaton Christ Church. The Escaton Christ Church serves three eschatological Eucharist. I inhale Jesus Christ's dying breath. I eat His bleeding blue water flesh. I drink knowledge cross life coalesced. I garden Eden repent the cost of theft. I officially legalize Jesus Christ's dying breath, flesh, water, blood, and cross for the Escaton Christ Church. And legalese, I officially legalize N N dimethyltryptamine, psilocybin, and monoamine oxidase inhibitor from nature for the Escaton Christ Church now in Seal Beach, California. I cite the law from the letters of the word Jesus Christ's body, as well as verses, John 1930, Luke 2:21, John 6:53, Numbers 1537 through 41, John 1934 through 35, Genesis 3:6 through 7, Revelation 22:1 and 2, and John 20:14 through 15 of the Holy Bible. True gone, true gone, true gone, true gone, true gone, true gone. God is language, oh, hold on, for the true gone, true gone, that's John 6:54 and Luke 2:24. God is language itself, for I am, has sent me to you, that's Exodus 3:14. Jesus Christ is the word that incarnates language in the first and last law of syntax, that's John 1:1 through 5. The sun's intention, an arrow and a rainbow, release of a smile, Genesis 9:1 through 17. I love you all, thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close oral communications. We'll move on to approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
I'd like to pull item D.
Item D? Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to pull item E, and I'd like to pull item J. Okay, City Clerk, do you have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. Eight supplemental communications were received, they've been distributed to the Council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like a motion, a second please, to approve tonight's agenda.
I move.
That, yeah.
Second.
Okay, please vote on your iPads. Okay, well, that passes 5-0. We'll move on to presentations. Our first presentation, or our only presentation, is the 49th Annual Americana Awards. Howard Kummerman, Executive Director of the Cypress College Foundation, welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council.
We are Greg and Kathy.
There's some other slides, maybe we can start at the beginning. That one should play automatically. I guess we could play it then. There we go. That's perfect, thank you. Well, I want to thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you today about the Americana Awards, our 49th annual event, and this year we will be at the Weston Anaheim Resort on March 16th. It's going to be a fabulous event. Maybe you can, yeah, I think this is not working perfect. Thank you so much. We have recognized 20 Citizens of the Year from the City of Seal Beach, and this event that we hold each year now, 49 years, helps the Cypress College Foundation to raise money for our programmatic efforts. We give away more than $400,000 a year in scholarships. We also fund emergency assistance and other programs on the campus. Our enrollment is up now almost to pre-pandemic levels, so we're very excited to welcome our students back on campus in person, and yet their needs are greater than ever. And so this event and the money we raise from the foundation helps to make a huge difference in our students' lives and in their success. I also want to thank our City Committee for the City of Seal Beach, led by Scott Newton and Gina Elafonte. They have made an incredible mark with the honorees each year, and this year is going to be the same with Greg and Kathy Fellers. I also have a member of our Board of Directors here. We have Beth Pyburn, who's here to support us in our efforts. We have a new president at Cypress College, Dr. Scott Thayer. Many of you were at Dr. Joanna Schilling's retirement celebration, and Scott Thayer has been with us for just a little bit more than two months. He wishes for me to express his greetings, and he looks forward to working with the City Council and the City of Seal Beach and its residents to welcome your students to the college and make sure that we educate our students. So last year, we recognized Darren and Corey Deleone, and as I mentioned, this year we have the pleasure of welcoming Greg and Kathy Fellers. I'm going to say a couple of words about Greg and Kathy, who, by the way, were not able to join us tonight, which is a unique thing that takes place, but as they are retired, they're traveling right now, so we will recognize them and hopefully will all join us on March 16th for Americana. Greg and Kathy Fellers, married for 55 years, met en route to a college orientation in 1964. Greg, a respected horse doctor, and Kathy, a dedicated teacher, retired to Seal Beach, actively contributing to their community and church. Esteemed for their service, including disaster response and local initiatives, they've been celebrated as grand marshals in the Seal Beach Christmas Parade. Together, they exemplify teamwork, enjoying an active lifestyle with biking, pickleball, skiing, and beach activities while also serving on various boards and volunteer efforts, underlining a partnership defined by mutual support and shared achievements. And of course, you'll have to join us on March 16th to learn more about Greg and Kathy. And even though they're not able to join us in person today, we have a short video with them inviting you to Americana.
We are Greg and Kathy Fellers, and we are Citizens of the Year for Seal Beach.
And that's for the Americana Awards, and we'd like you to join us. The date is on March 16th for the Americana Awards at the Weston Anaheim Resort.
You could say no to that, especially with Kathy and her beautiful demeanor. We, of course, as many of you know who have joined us, one of the ways that we raise money is through an incredible opportunity drawing, so we hope that if you join us, and even if you don't, aren't able to join us, that you participate in the opportunity drawing. We've got incredible prizes that we give away whether you attend or not. So again, the event is on March 16th, it starts at 5:30 at the Anaheim Weston Resort. We invite you to sponsor the event, provide us with auction items as you have in the past, and we always include two pages of ads for the City of Seal Beach to promote your upcoming events and other activities that are taking place in Seal Beach. So thank you very much, and we look forward to having you join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Probably want me to leave that here.
Yep. Okay, we're going to move on to the City Attorney Report. Attorney Corelli, do you have a report tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the closed session agenda. All five Council members were present, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
And magic mushrooms are still illegal in the state of California.
Okay. City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a few items tonight. First of all, as all of you know, we unfortunately had a, recently had a resident pass away in College Park East as a result of a house fire. And Mayor, I know you at the last council meeting had thanked the Orange County Fire Authority, our police department, and our CERT team, who recently had done some canvassing and spent a day out in College Park East talking to residents about the importance of smoke detectors. City staff has continued to work with OCFA in response to that unfortunate fire, and as a result, I want to thank and acknowledge our Division Chief Craig Covey, who I don't believe is here tonight, but especially Admin Captain Nolan McGoy, who's here tonight. Nolan, thank you for being here, as well as PIO Captain Duran. They recently worked with our SBTV3 team to produce a fire safety video, and so I'd like to showcase that here tonight. We actually, for those of you who haven't seen it, you'll see it here. It's also up on our website, it's going to be featured for the next few episodes of Studio Cafe on SBTV3. And we've also added a QR code in our upcoming bi-weekly newsletter that hits over 4,000 email accounts as well. So with that, and again, a thank you to Admin Captain McGoy, who's been working with his team over the last couple of months on outreach to our residents, and so we'd like to showcase that video here tonight.
Hi, my name's Sean Doran, Fire Captain and Public Information Officer with the Orange County Fire Authority, and we proudly serve the community of Seal Beach. I am here today to discuss the importance of working smoke alarms and home escape plans in the wake of a recent tragic fatal fire in the community of Seal Beach. Approximately 2/3 of all home fatal fires occur in homes where there are no working smoke alarms. So today, we'd like to stress the importance of having a working smoke alarm in conjunction with that home escape plan. And what does that look like? It involves sitting down with your family and fellow residents of the home and developing that plan, so when the smoke alarm does activate, you're ready to execute the plan instead of thinking of a plan. Understand there needs to be two ways out of every room in your home. Stay low as you exit the home. Never go back into your home after you've left, and identify a safe point outside your home for everybody to reunite. And finally, as you exit the home, if you're able to do so safely, close doors as you leave to limit the fire spread. That home escape plan, in conjunction with your working smoke alarms, practiced on a regular basis, will make the difference. We are here for the community of Seal Beach, and we look forward to our partnership with the community as we all share the message of fire safety. Thank you.
Okay, the second item that I have tonight is, as all of you know, we have our third annual Clean California Dump Day event that's coming up on Saturday, March 9th. Lauren Berich, who is a management analyst in the City Manager's Office, works very closely alongside Republic Services, Caltrans, as well as Goodwill Industries in producing this event, which is free for our community. As we like to say in our office, Lauren likes to talk trash, and so we've invited her to come here tonight to share with you about this event and why it's really important. Lauren?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. And yes, we're super excited to have our third annual City of Seal Beach Dump Day, which will be held on Saturday, March 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Public Works Yard, which is located at 1776 Adolfo Lopez Drive, which is just down the street from our police department off of Seal Beach Boulevard. The event, as you mentioned, is hosted in partnership with Caltrans, Republic Services, and Goodwill as part of the Clean California Initiative. So residents may drop off bulky household waste at no cost. Staff will be on-site to collect household items that are too bulky for residential garbage bins, such as mattresses, furniture, and toys. Salvageable items will be kept out of the landfill, which we're super proud of and donated to Goodwill. The following items are not accepted at the event: hazardous materials, including batteries, paints, oils, chemicals, pesticides, smoke detectors, fluorescent lights, etc., e-waste or universal waste, concrete, dirt, rocks, brick, asphalt, or sand. And you know what? I'm realizing that I just said e-waste was not accepted. It is accepted, because it's in our accepted list. Apologies for that confusion. But treated wood and tires are not accepted. So again, since Goodwill is one of our partners, salvageable items are kept out of the landfill, which we're super proud of and donated to Goodwill. The following items are not accepted at the event: hazardous materials, including batteries, paints, oils, chemicals, pesticides, smoke detectors, fluorescent lights, etc., e-waste or universal waste, concrete, dirt, rocks, brick, asphalt, or sand. And you know what? I'm realizing that I just said e-waste was not accepted. It is accepted, because it's in our accepted list. Apologies for that confusion. But treated wood and tires are not accepted. So again, since Goodwill is one of our partners, salvageable items are kept out of the landfill, and if residents would like to, they can just stop by the event and just make donations directly to Goodwill, so we can all use this as a great spring cleaning opportunity. And Republic Services has generously donated, or provided the containers for the event. So space is limited, and waste may not be accepted once capacity is reached. We usually, at this point, have a line of excited people ready for Dump Day, so I would say, you know, get out there on the earlier side. And we hope to see you there. This has been a very popular event, and this is actually an item that was going to go in the trash, and we were able to donate to Goodwill. And as always, I will be tracking data, so we'll see which council district has the highest participation. In 2022, Mayor Sustarsik had the highest participation, but in 2023, Mayor Protem Landau took the lead. So let's see who comes out on top this year. And we've also heard from Caltrans that unfortunately, this will likely be our last Dump Day, as this program is being discontinued, so we really want to make this our best one yet. Residents may email that email address there, askcityhall@sealbeachca.gov, if you have any questions. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate the opportunity to present. Residents may email that email address there, askcityhall@sealbeachca.gov, if you have any questions. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Any questions?
Lauren, thank you. Appreciate all the work you do with this effort on the city's behalf.
Thank you, and I appreciate our city attorney matching my presentation with his tie.
Thank you. And then my last item tonight, as all of you know, there's been multiple new pieces of legislation that we've been looking at, that became, took effect on January 1st. I mean, so much so that we're still filtering through them, but there's been some that we really want to draw your attention to, and so I'm going to ask our Community Development Director, Alexa Smidl, just tonight, just to provide you with a brief update on some of those new bills that have the ability to impact residential development and zoning standards here in Seal Beach. Alexa?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. I am going to share a few bills of note for the council and for the community, and I also want to share that I am not an expert in any of these bills. We are very much working through them in real time to figure out what implementation looks like. I'll start with AB 1332. This requires the city to develop a program for pre-approved detached accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and make these pre-approved plans available on our website. The state's goal is to reduce review times, however, every site is different, so there's no one-size-fits-all ADU. So there may be designs that we can make universal. It doesn't necessarily make them approved for every single site within the city that chooses to develop an ADU. So we're working through that complexity, but we will be in compliance in time. AB 1308, this prohibits the city from increasing the number of parking spaces required for a single-family home due to a renovation or expansion. It does appear that our zoning code may conflict with this, particularly in the Old Town area, and staff is analyzing it and will be preparing code updates to bring to the Planning Commission and the City Council to address this new law. SB 684 requires a streamlined ministerial approval for housing developments of 10 or less units, even if the development does not meet all city development codes. I have no idea if we'll ever encounter this type of proposal, but it is illustrative of another piece of legislation that has reduced our ability to make land use decisions. Staff will be reviewing this and determine whether or not there's a need to take action. SB 713, this one is particularly interesting, modifies the definition of a development standard that can be waived pursuant to a density bonus law to expressly include development standards enacted by the voters through an initiative or referendum. For your reference, a density bonus project is a housing project that proposes to include affordable units in order to receive additional density as well as other concessions. This is built out in the state law. Density bonus law is not new, however, what concessions can be granted has increased over time. And what this means for us is that the 25-foot height limit imposed by Measure Z in most of Old Town could be ignored in a density bonus project that could be a concession that would need to be granted and allow that density bonus project to build above that 20-foot height limit. I'm sorry, 25-foot height limit. And then finally, for our business community, I wanted to point out AB 783, which requires us, as the city, to notice all of our business license holders of the new state requirement that all single-user restrooms must be signed as all-gender. And as City Manager Ingram noted, this is just a very small sampling of the number of bills that have been passed by the legislature that we're keeping an eye on. Thank you.
That concludes my report. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Sure.
Alexa, regarding that, that new bill regarding the density, so if there's like a double lot in Old Town, they could, and if they had enough affordable housing, they could go three, four stories, five stories?
Density bonus law is very formulaic, so it would very much depend on what they were proposing to build. I don't know if the city attorney wants to weigh in on this. I'm not quite sure that we'd end up with a skyscraper by any means. There's, you'd have to assemble a whole lot of land to put something like that together.
If it's a concession or incentive, the developer has pretty broad authority, but typically, a concession incentive is only supposed to be permitted to the extent necessary to allow the affordable units to be built. But it's hard to kind of talk in a vacuum without seeing a project in front of you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, we'll move on to council comments. General council member comments are reporting pursuant to AB 1234. Councilwoman Kelmick, did you have any?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last council meeting, I attended an Orange County Fire Authority Operations Committee meeting. I attended a tour of the--
Can you hear me? Now, better?
Get closer to the mic.
Okay, how about now? I can hear myself. I attended Orange County Fire Authority Operations Committee meeting. I attended, along with my other council members, the, a tour of the Yale Navigation Homeless Center in Santa Ana, which was amazing. The number of people that they are helping, the number of services that they are offering, and how well-run it is, it's truly amazing. And it gives me some hope that if more solutions like this are put forward, that we can help more people and make a dent in the homeless problem that we do have. Attended a Restoration Advisory Board meeting here, along with the Naval Weapons Station, and this is a review of their remediation plans on the base with regards to former operations on the Navy base involving munitions and the pollution that has been left as a result of that. And it's an ongoing project that will take several years to complete, but it was very interesting to see what they are doing. I attended an Orange County Council of Governments meeting, which is the municipal planning arm of SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of Governments. And then I attended our monthly board meeting for the Orange County Fire Authority. And I would just like to bring up something that's, you know, becoming, it will be coming, becoming more prevalent, and that's that there's the new, the new law regarding daylight and how it affects crossings, and how it's going to affect parking spaces in our city. So there'll be a lot more coming out with that, but basically, in order to make pedestrian crossings safer at intersections, there's going to be a restriction on anywhere from 15 to 20 feet that will not allow parking in order to make the crosswalks more visible and make it safer for pedestrians. So we're, I know our PD and Public Works are kind of working on how that's going to flesh out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Roar?
I have nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
Yes. Along with the few other people from the City Council, I did the tour at the homeless shelter, the Yale Navigation Center that's run by PAS. My thanks to Chief Henderson and our community-oriented policemen that were with us on that trip. And Alexa, I think you were responsible for organizing that, so I thank you as well. It was enlightening. It was great to see that at least one, one portion of the continuum of homelessness is being covered, and these people are being helped with programmatic ways of getting them from a homeless state into a job and into a permanent situation. The people that are admitted into this homeless shelter aren't the ones who are on the street, and they're like two steps ahead of that. There are other facilities that handle people, to house people directly off the street or directly with drug problems, directly with other types of issues, but it was good to see this end of the spectrum and see that they are involved in getting people back into permanent housing that they pay for themselves. We actually saw a few of the people go, leaving for work from this facility. It's not like they're locked in or anything like that. So they were getting suited up and going to work and things like that. So that was very encouraging for me to see. I attended the Fountain Valley Mayor's State of the City Luncheon. Can't say that I learned all that much there, except that it's a very, very impressive affair. There must have been at least 300 or 400 people there. I also attended the Orange County Mosquito Vector Trustee Picnic with the employees, where we got to meet some of the folks that work for Orange County Mosquito Vector, especially our guy. His name is Caesar. If you ever see a mosquito vector truck around, his name is Caesar, and he's a great guy. And he comes around, he sprays standing water, and he's got a route that he covers around here. He collects traps and things like that, and so it was great to meet him. We had the Orange County Mosquito Vector Board Meeting following that. I also, on a day, yes, last week, I went back to Mosquito Vector to meet with each of the department heads in Mosquito Vector District. The lab, the collections, the, they have the mosquito fish hatchery, that they actually grow their own mosquito fish. I was quite impressed with all of the leadership of that organization and the amount of work that's going on there. I did that with this in mind. I'm going to Dallas next week on the, as a trustee of the Mosquito Vector Board. They're paying for the trip, not Seal Beach, so it's going to be an educational thing, where I get to see what's happening throughout the country and attend various sessions about mosquito abatement and what, we kind of joke about mosquitoes, but being somebody who spends a lot of time in third-world countries, one of the clarifying distinguishing factors between our country and much of the rest of the planet is we don't have the tropical diseases, we don't have the typhus, we don't have the malaria, we don't have these types of diseases that are carried by mosquitoes and other types of vector animals. And so we should be thankful for the work these guys have been doing. They've been doing it a long time, and we are clear of malaria because of the work these guys do. Anyway, so that's what's going on there. I've been working with the ad hoc committee of the OC-OAAC. It's called OCOWAC now. It used to be called Senior Citizen Advisory Council. That is the conduit between the senior community of Orange County and the Orange County Board of Supervisors. We are now called OC-OAAC, which stands for the Older Adult Advisory Commission. So it's OCOWAC, and I'm not sure I like that, to be honest with you. Not all of us are adults, so. MODAC, on Friday, I'll be attending the one-day tour of the facility up in Waymouth, and also the Napolitano Innovation Center for a demonstration of how they are treating wastewater and how it goes through the purification process before they put it back into the aquifer and things like that. So it'll be a hands-on, Orange County-oriented water tour on this Friday, so that's what's going on in my spot.
Mayor Pro Tem Landau, do you have your report?
Yes. So regarding the tour of the homeless center, I don't really have much more to add than my fellow council members, except that I was beyond impressed with it. Again, thank you, Alexa, for suggesting it to the chief. Chief, thank you for taking us down there. It was incredible. There's hope. I would like to take this time to address the public comments, if I can. John, congratulations on your new church. Also, on the street sweeping on the Anaheim Bridge, is that something that we're able to do?
Since this is in a construction zone by Caltrans and within Caltrans jurisdiction, we will be relaying that comment over to them.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Can we submit the grants to the EPA? Had you heard of that, or is that something that we could submit for to?
Absolutely. Staff has been not only looking at this particular grant, but other grants that are applicable for stormwater as well. Not necessarily for this, but we do have to be strategic about what we apply for and make sure that when we do invest money into writing grants, that they are going to be a competitive grant that we can be successful with. Grants do take a lot of resources and consulting time to actually put together, so we want to make sure that money is put to good use.
Okay, so can you give me a follow-up on that when you've explored that?
Of course.
Thank you. And then Old Ranch. So if the projects do go through at Old Ranch, to Mr. Jenkins' point, is that going to be problematic with the absorption of water?
So the flood, the drainage area, the Old Ranch Country Club, is overseen by the county, so they will have to go through permitting through the county to actually get whatever design that they are intending to approve as well. So I'm certain that the county is not going to let any design parameters through that's going to be a disadvantage or negative impact towards our community.
Okay, thank you. And my last point, Sacramento has taken away more and more of our local control, so elections have consequences. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Most, most of my, most of my report has also already been shared. I am, I also was going to ask about the stormwater grants. Basically, we need to see whether it's something that is not restricted to Flint and Michigan-type situations, or something that we could, we could apply for, and whether it would, it needs to be a disadvantaged community or?
Sure. So there are Justice 40 programs that are more geared towards disadvantaged communities. There are grants that are, require a higher match, which is still going to be a substantial investment for the city. So we are trying to ID grant opportunities or extended, external funding opportunities where the burden on city's general fund is not as high. So for instance, if a project is $50 million, a 50% match is still $25 million on the city, so we have to make sure that is something that we can still afford on our side.
Okay, okay, thank you for that, Iris. I also took a tour of the Yale Navigation Center. I attended the RAB meeting at the Naval, regarding Naval Weapons Station's remediation plans. And I attended an OC sanitation district meeting. I wanted to announce that we'll be holding in 4th District, a, well, maybe not 4th District, at the, at the North Seal Beach Community Center on Thursday, March 21st, a town hall meeting for College Park East residents to discuss the recent flooding over, well, over the last few years, hoping that residents can share their experiences and concerns with city staff and police, who will share their recommendations and basically listen and see what we can do to try to help out the cities, to help out College Park East. So I'm hoping for a good attendance at that meeting. Thank you. And that is all for me. We have no council items. Move on to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. I'll call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items D, E, and J, which have been pulled. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote on your iPads. Okay, that's approved, 5-0. Moved on to the items that have been called. First one is item D. City managers, or staff reports?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will turn this item over--
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will turn this item over to Alexa Smidell, and Alexa can simply give just a brief summary of this item, and then Councilmember Moore, you can, we're happy to address any questions you might have. Alexa?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good evening again, Mayor and City Council. This item is to approve a contract with Holistic, let me get the whole name right, Holistic System Integration Solutions. They have been our, they've stood by our side during this entire two-plus years implementation process for a new land management and permit system. It was formerly known as NRGOV and is now called EPL. This system will replace two dated systems that are currently being used within building and code enforcement, as well as public works engineering, and also provide a system for the planning division, which does not have an online system at the moment. The goal of this system is to have a unified system for all the departments to be able to more expediently go through permits and issue permits, review plans online, all kinds of new digital things that bring us into the new century. It'll also open up a lot more opportunity for residents and property owners to submit for permits online, making us kind of a 24-hour planning operation, which is, which is very interesting and something that most cities are moving to at this point. When the system was purchased, I can't say that anyone knew exactly what this rollout was going to look like. It has certainly been an interesting and a bit of a bumpy ride. We are finally in the final stages. In fact, staff is kind of in lockdown this week, doing our initial training so that we can start testing the system and identify flaws, with the hope of going live in the end of June. The holistic contract is to assist us with those things. Holistic acts on the city's behalf as a partner to staff. These systems do not come right out of the box. There is a lot of coding and specifications that need to be put into place in order to make the system work for us. In addition, the budget that was provided for EPL, for Tyler, the company that owns EPL, was not adequate enough to get us through the final stages here. There were a few things that were not included in the budget, so we are also asking to amend the budget to include enough funding to get this project launched. That funding is provided through a collection that's done as a part of our building issuance permit process. We collect fees to fund technology improvements, and that's the fund that's being used for this purpose. Have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Is it going to be an ongoing, like, extra maintenance for this new software? Is it hosted here, or is it in the cloud?
Oh, that's a good question. I believe that it's in the cloud. I don't think we have the capability to host here. However, yes, there is ongoing. Tyler does regular system updates and changes, so in the future, the system will change and evolve over time, absolutely.
And it integrates with our other systems, the accounting, or?
We are working on that. We are hoping that the two will speak very efficiently to each other, but that has definitely been part of the process of, that we're navigating right now to try to make that work as well as possible.
Okay, and how would it benefit the average resident? Would they be able to do permits over the system?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, you can do, you'll be able to eventually do a lot of things from the comfort of your living room. We do offer some of that capability now. This will enhance it. So if you want a, you know, certain kind of permit, you can just log in, you set yourself up an account, provide us your information, and the process starts right there, you know, at 10 o'clock at night if you wanted it to.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Okay, can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please vote on your iPads. Okay, that passes 5-0. I'm sorry, I'll try to speak up. Okay, our next item is item E. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Again, this item will be presented by our Community Development Director, Alexa Smidell, and then she's available for questions. Alexa?
Thank you. This item proposes to sell the city-owned, single-family home located in the College Park East neighborhood to a private buyer. The city purchased the property in 2014 with the hope that the site could be used for stormwater system improvements, specifically to be a pump station location. Unfortunately, adequate funding to implement the project has not been obtained, and the current cost estimates for such a project are anticipated to be over $50 million at this point. When the last tenant vacated the property, staff requested direction from the city council and subsequently moved forward with the sale of the property. At that time, the law required the city to go through a lengthy disposition process to declare the property surplus and offer it for sale to affordable housing developers. That process finally concluded in December of 2023. The property was then listed for sale on the open market for $1.25 million. The city received several offers, the highest of which is an all-cash offer above the asking price. That offer is at $1.28 million with contingencies removed. This item presents a sales contract for the home, and staff is available for questions.
Okay. I pulled this item because, you know, the time, although this was put up for sale by the council a year ago, it was a different council, but the timing with our storms and our recent experiences flooding in College Park East again this year in addition to last year has sort of brought home the issue that we're, those of us who live there are not seeing any kind of solutions on the horizon for what we've been experiencing. So I pulled it to maybe have a discussion with council before we vote to, to, you know, listen to the residents who came here tonight, who spoke about the problems they're having. I know it's a lot of money, and we don't have millions and millions of dollars, but any little bit of help for our residences, for our residents is, is, we just, we just need help. And I hope everyone will come to the town hall meeting, and I hope we can have a respectful conversation. Let them know all the experiences that they're, that they're seeing, and, you know, what, what solutions that we might have if this house is not a solution, or if the council decides to sell it. So I will not be supporting the motion, but I'd like to, you know, if anybody else would like to say anything, I welcome comments.
I guess I'll go. I know that you guys have identified another location that could be just as suitable as Ironwood property. Can you speak on that?
Absolutely, and thank you for asking that question. Along Ironwood, I think that there are other suitable opportunities to actually help convey water over to the golf course area. 4197, it is a location that can possibly convey water and be a possible pump station opportunity. However, looking at it further, to actually build a pump station in that area is quite invasive to the immediate vicinity. We are asking to actually convey water to the centralized point and then pumping it over to the golf course. Running a pump station is quite loud, and for those that actually have toured Western Pump Station before, has experienced how loud those pumps and motors can be. We have identified another location that could be possibly a better one and more suitable. Astor Park is, for example, a location that we can also look at when funding is made available. This is a city park location. It is within city right-of-way, and it is going to achieve the same effect as well. So it is something that we have at our disposal. Should we actually move forward, and actually not, should we move forward, it's when we move forward. We can consider that as well.
Thank you. So going back to Ms. Campbell's, you know, her points, having it be done incrementally, since I've only been on the council for a year, why hasn't that happened?
I will have to actually look back at the history of what the increments were proposed at that time, but I believe AKM presented a study back in 2019, and those increments were not proposed as a focus study. My concern about actually constructing it incrementally is actually creating a bottleneck of stormwater, and it's not really going to be helping out. So that's more of constructing and digging up the roads, and might not necessarily help with conveyance, but may help with building the puzzle at the end of the day.
So if it's moved to Astor Park, so right now, that line goes from Ironwood under Lamson and over to Old Ranch. So if you moved it to Astor Park, would you be connecting it back over to Lamson, or you'd actually be having to tear up Lamson and put in a new line over to Old Ranch?
So it will continue through and cut across Lamson through Candleberry, which we already have infrastructure in that area, and it will be upsized, by the way. Infrastructure and storm drain lines and inline detention basins along Ironwood will be required regardless of the location that we're going to be putting a pump station at.
If we do decide to sell the property, would the proceeds remain for the use of future solutions for College Park East?
Thank you. The staff report is drafted to reserve the funds for stormwater system improvements, but if the council would like to specify that it be for College Park East, I believe that you could do that within your motion.
I can't imagine what it's like to live in a flooding bathtub area. Shelley's, Mayor Sastarsik, excuse me, has described it as a bathtub, and it all drains down into those areas. I actually, when I was fresh on the council, or just coming into the council last year, I took the time to go over and meet with Mayor Sastarsik and Mr. Miller, and they had the maps out, and they showed me the flooding, and they showed me where things flood, and they showed me where the flows are, and they showed me what the, what the challenges are and all of these things. And you can see the idea behind the Ironwood property is, it seems like a logically good idea. If you could increase the size of that pipe, it's a straw that would go out, and you'd maybe put a pump situation on there. But my understanding at this point in time is that we can't solve the bathtub problem with the Ironwood property. It could be incremental, I suppose, but I'm not sure it's anything other than symbolism right now. A false hope that we could solve this flooding problem with a single line out through the Ironwood property and things, and that would be the solution. It's going to take a lot more than just that to fix this problem. I don't know what we would solve by keeping the property. We can take the money, and I think it'd be a good idea if we use the money for College Park East for some future remediation of this problem, but nothing could be worse, in my view, than spending $2 or $3 million and not getting a solution to the problem, or spending $10 million on a pump station and not solving the problem, still having a flooding problem. I don't know what the experts would say about this, but it's clear that we're not going to solve this problem with the Ironwood property. So I support the sale of the property. I also support the idea of keeping the money in College Park East for use on some mediation, future mediation, some future plan that we could, we could somehow finance. Anyway, so that's my point.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, the way that College Park East was developed is a flat, and it sounds like to remediate that's 50, you know, 40, 50 million. And I don't think it's a good idea from an engineering perspective to do it incrementally. So yeah, I did see, you know, there's some alternatives that were proposed at the park by Iris. I think that if it accomplishes the same thing, we were losing an opportunity by not selling. So I would be supportive of selling the property and, yeah, per the staff report.
If the property does have to be sold with what's going on now, with what Sacramento is passing, is it possible to negotiate some sort of covenant that they won't come in and build multiple units on the property?
So Civil Code Section 4751 says that no restriction in a real estate contract that prohibits the development of an ADU or JADU is enforceable. So you couldn't restrict the development of an ADU or JADU, at least as of today. There's not, there's not a similar provision in state law that says a provision in a real estate contract that restricts the development of an SB9 unit or other types of multifamily housing wouldn't be enforceable. So you could do that, but that would be a counteroffer that you'd be approving tonight. And so we'd have to see if that would be acceptable to the buyer.
Yeah, I'm not talking about ADUs or JADUs. I'm talking about, they come in and either split the lot and, you know, make it multiple, like three, four, you know, what, whatever, you know, if we could just keep it to single-family residents, you know, with the ADU or JADU.
So you could include that in the resolution tonight, that the approval is subject to the buyer agreeing to restrict development of multifamily units, except as permitted by state law for an ADU or JADU. You know, that would go back to the buyer, and if the buyer said no, or, you know, I want to reduce the price, they'd send back another counter, and this would probably have to come back to you.
I would actually like to take, take a bit of time to answer your question. I'd also like to, since we just got this new proposal tonight, to have a little time to look at that, to let the residents, maybe even have our meeting would be ideal, but to have a little time to look at the plan, to see, to ask some questions, including your questions, and come back. You know, we're not talking about a lot of time.
And I do understand that the property manager here, that's serving as the broker, the property manager for the city that's serving as the city's broker is in the audience, if you want to ask if that's something that, you know, you know, the timeline for floating that and coming back with another counter.
Can they come to the podium?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is that the, I guess, the buyer right now with the highest bid is a group out of Newport that does high-end developments. And so do you know what their proposed use of the land, that lot is?
All the offers that we've been receiving have been for single-family residents. The house has not been touched in a long, long time, so we believe they're going to be fixing the house up, doing renovations on it. But there's no talks of an ADU. The lot's not big enough to do a multifamily or even a duplex. It's just, it's a pretty small lot, like all the other homes there. So there's never been any talks of anything but a single-family residence. So I don't think that's something that the city would, should be concerned about from the offers that we've received so far.
So your client would be okay, amenable to saying, single-family ADU, maybe, or JADU, and nothing more?
Yeah, we could, we could put that in the counteroffer, but that's more of a city attorney's comments. I don't think, I don't think the zoning even allows multifamily.
No, the zoning doesn't allow multifamily. The only thing that they could do to override local zoning under state law would be, I think, just an SB9 development, where SB9 says you can do an urban lot split, subdivide the parcel into two parcels, and then you can put duplexes on each parcel for a maximum of four units.
And the lot's not big enough to do that, so. I don't think you can even put an ADU back there either, because it's I don't think you can even put an ADU back there either because it's so close. So it's none of, none of the offers that we've received have had any discussions on lot splits or ADUs or multifamily use. It's pretty much just, looks like they're pretty much investors that are going to renovate the home, hold it, and maybe sell it after the renovations. But that's, that's all that we've received so far.
Okay, thank you.
Shelley?
Yes, go ahead.
In the, in the neighborhood, what have been the highest sales of the single-family homes there?
So we did a market analysis, I believe it was December, January, and the homes were approximately 1.1, 1.2 million is kind of our feeling of where the prices were selling for. So we, we listed the home at around 1.2 million and we let the market dictate right now with interest rates and the demands. And we were actually taken back by the amount of offers and all these offers are coming in all cash because of the interest rates. And actually, we're getting above our asking price of 1.2 million.
So my, my question would be if if they're going to pay top dollar for a house that in order for us to continue to own it and rent it, we'd have to put well over $100,000 into it to fix it up. And if they would be planning to renovate it, they would be way over market in terms of flipping it or?
Councilmember, if I may, my my recollection of of the market report that Mr. Baghdadi and his firm provided to us, there were a couple of properties at a higher sales rate that had been significantly renovated.
Good. Question, if I may, is the buyer aware of the flooding issue?
We are disclosing that, absolutely.
It's it's disclosed in those terms and not some?
No, we're going to be very clear with full disclosure about the flooding and the issues we're having in that area. And the whole contract will be reviewed by the city attorney as well before anything gets signed off.
Because they will hear from the neighbors. They will hear about the flooding from the neighbors.
Most of them are already aware of it because they've already checked the site and we've been, and it's been raining for the past three months, two months. So whoever's been looking at the home has seen that there is flooding in the area.
Flooding in their front yard.
Correct.
If, if it looks like the, the, the offers are flippers, probably, is that information passed on to a buyer of said flip property?
I don't know if they're necessarily flippers. They may purchase, fix up and rent. Rents are extremely high right now. I don't think there's going to be much room to come in, put in $100,000 or whatever and try to flip it. There's really not that much room there to do so. So I I'm looking, I'm assuming it's going to be a long-term hold is what I would look at.
Okay, well, I wasn't, when you said hold, I wasn't sure what that, what you meant. Okay.
And I did just want to note that if the council approved the sale agreement tonight, this is just your standard California real estate contract, a period of due diligence would open. And then that would be the point where we would make those, the city would make those disclosures about flooding and any other information it knows about the property.
And some of the offers already have their contingencies removed upfront, so they're not even going to do the inspection. So we would just add all the disclosures in the forms, make sure they're all checked off and signed off by the potential buyers.
Okay, I just want to make whoever is living there aware, you know, so they, they don't come back and, you know, after us.
Those are the discussions we've been having already with with the city.
Okay, all right.
And so with respect to the covenant that Councilmember Landau brought up, if you have two courses of action, one is you could ask Mohammed to go talk to the buyer, see if they're, make a counter and see if they're agreeable to it. And then he can come back. Or you can approve the resolution and the contract tonight, subject to the buyer agreeing to that covenant. And then if they agree, you got a contract. If they don't agree, they'll have to come back with whatever the their counter offer is.
Any more discussion? Somebody wants to make a motion?
A motion to approve based on that condition that the lawyer just pointed out.
Which, which condition?
The condition that that stays a single-family residence.
So before I read some language for you, did the council also want to clarify in the resolution that the finance director will set aside all revenue from the sale of the property to stormwater improvements within College Park East?
I would leave it with just stormwater improvements based on the College Park East being 40, 50 million to do anything of value, so.
Okay, so I would say, suggest adding a Section 6 to the resolution to say the finance director shall set aside all revenue from the sale of the property for stormwater improvements. And then?
Per the staff report.
It's, yes, in the staff, I noticed that the resolution didn't act, it says that it's in the resolution, it wasn't there. So I just wanted to make crystal clear it was in there. And then amend the Section 1 of the resolution to state that it's subject to the buyer agreeing to limit the use of the property to a single-family home, except to the extent permitted by state law, in accordance with a covenant acceptable to the city attorney.
Don't we, wouldn't we need to get a response from the client before we can actually move on this?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was the point I was bringing up is that what you're basically approving tonight by adding that is a counter offer. And so if the counter is acceptable to the buyer, then they would agree and you'd have a contract at that point. If they said, you know, we can't live with that restriction or, you know, we want $100,000 off the purchase price, that would be another counter that would be coming back to you and you'd have to approve that.
If I may, I'm sympathetic to the people in College Park East. I heard from one of our local politicians during the first atmospheric river that was passing by and she was saying, was anything happening in Leisure World that would be like photo-worthy? And I said, no, you should go to College Park East and call up Mayor Sastarsik and you can get some good footage over there and not in, so we don't have the same problems you do. I agree with the engineering thought that this is not the solution to the problem. This is not anything more than a symbolic thing if we choose not to sell it. But I also am sympathetic to, to holding off until after the the town hall, you know, at least show that much symbolism, you know, let us go and here and meet these people. I went over and met with you on the thing, but I could be sympathetic to holding off until we're done with that town hall and then approve the sale. But I'm not sympathetic to some codicil or some sort of covenant that says they're going to keep it as a, a single-family home. We probably have time if we're going to hold off until after the March meeting with the College Park East residents. So, you know, I would, I would say motion as it's written, however, holding the money in College Park East for their benefit, their flood control, and wait until after the, the town hall that's already organized.
Could that be a substitute motion?
I, I just want to clarify though, because the resolution would approve the contract. So once the buyer accepts, you've got a contract and you're moving into an escrow period at that point. And so if you really wanted to wait until after the town hall, the, the decision tonight would be to take no action until after the town, until after the town hall and at the next meeting after that.
I have another quick question.
Okay.
So did you do a best and final or did you counter all of the offers we got, you know, saying, okay, we got all these offers in, you know, here's the new price?
Yeah, we, we've been very, very transparent with the buyers. We did the best and final. Actually, we still even have it on the market now. We have not taken it off the market. So we make sure we're vetting as much as we possibly can in the open markets to see the best and final offer we can possibly get for the city. So, yes.
Okay. And it does say in the offer that it's subject to the city council approving, so they, it's apparent that that isn't necessarily super quick?
Well, yeah, they all understand and we've been getting bombarded with emails on when are we going to get an answer, when are we going to get an answer? So they know that the city is involved. It's not going to be a quick turnaround where someone's going to sign and we're going to go into escrow tomorrow morning until, of course, the city council decides and then we can go after you guys have decided which route you'd like to take.
Okay.
So just procedurally where we stand right now, I think Councilmember Moore had made a motion inclusive of the covenant and reserving the money for stormwater improvements. I don't think I heard a second, though.
Okay, can, can we have a, we have a different motion?
If, if Mayor Moore's or Councilmember Moore's withdrawn or his motion's not seconded, then you can move to a different motion.
Does he have to withdraw it or just to fail that it doesn't get a second?
It'll fail if it doesn't have a second, so.
I'll just withdraw.
Okay.
Did Councilman Steele want to make a motion?
The, the idea that we're going to be having a, a town hall with these people immediately after we sign the deal and sell the property, it strikes me as a little bit callous, if you will, on our part. Is it feasible for us, sir, to wait until, what's your, the date on yours?
March 21st.
And we have a council meeting on, what's the next council meeting after that?
March 25th, I think they said.
Yeah, 25th.
25th, so we could hold this until the 20, council meeting on the 25th. Do you think the buyer would withdraw if we asked for that much time?
The ball's in your court. You guys dictate how much time you need. Nobody's in a rush on our end.
Okay.
I can't answer if the buyer is going to wait or not. The offers that we have.
We have three too, three offers, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we have more, more than three offers on the, on the home, so.
Let me, let me be clear. I don't, I, it's not the solution to the flooding problem in College Park East and selling the property makes more sense to me. I support the sale of the property. It just strikes me as a bit insensitive, if you will, if we sell it right before we have a town hall meeting out in College Park East and actually listen to the people out there. So I would favor holding this until the, the council meeting after the, the town hall. That would be my motion.
Okay.
Can I give a little bit of input?
Yes, sir.
We're not even close to actually selling the home yet. We'd still have to work with the city attorney, get the, get a counter offer, get the deal finalized first. So there's, there's still also a lot of time on the purchase side, so.
So we don't need to tonight say yea, nay. We can also say tonight, we can wait until March 25th, correct?
Yes, and that would give Mohammed time to go back to the buyer and say, the council has provided direction, you know, to include this covenant as part of the deal. Are you okay with that? It's coming back to the council on March 25th and still subject to the city council approval, but that's, that's the deal that'll be presented back to you if it's acceptable.
Is there a way we can make the resolution to after the town hall meeting to have an approval to move forward if they approve it, so we're not having to come back to the city council? Kill two birds with one stone? Is there a way to do that or?
I like killing two birds with one stone. That's a good idea.
I, I mean, we could say that the resolution doesn't take effect until March 25th, but, you know, that's basically just approving the contract tonight.
Question?
No.
The, the house would still technically remain on the market during this time?
So that, that depends on you.
Yes, we could keep it on the market.
You could continue to get, you could get another offer possible too?
Absolutely, yes. Again, we're not in a rush. It, it depends on the city and your decisions on when you'd like to sell it.
Okay, is there a second?
What's the motion? The motion is?
Is the motion to provide direction to Mohammed to make a counter that includes a covenant that restricts development to a single family, restricts the use of the property to a single-family home except as permitted by state law, subject to the city council's approval of the real estate contract at March, at the March 25th council meeting.
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote on your iPad. Okay, that passes for one. Okay, we will move on to the next item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Awarding and authorizing execution of design-build agreement with KYA Services for Heather Park Play Area Improvements. City Manager, is there a motion?
No motion, but.
There are a, yeah, yeah, whatever you call that.
Yes, I, Mayor and Council, I'd like to turn this item over to Catherine Cho, our Deputy Public Works Director, and just indicate, no, no pressure at all, but this is Catherine's first presentation to council since she's been with us. And I know she's really and truly excited about this project and this is her project. And so she's looking forward to this opportunity. Catherine?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. Good evening, Mayor Sastarsik, City Council and City Manager Ingram. I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with an update on the Heather Park Play Area Improvement Project. To start us off with a little bit of background, the city was awarded a Prop 68 per capita grant, which actually was started this whole process. Consistent with the city's park master plan, the council and residents desire to place Heather Park improvements as a priority. The grant funding was allocated to this effort. The item before you today is an award of contract for Kaya Services LLC to go ahead and do the rehabilitation of the park. And Kaya team is actually here with us tonight. And, does this work? Do you mind? Thank you, Chief. All right. So as you can see here, the basis of the design is to provide, provide an enhanced yet financial, financially sensible park improvement. The slide shows the existing layout on the left and the proposed on the right. As you can see, we are keeping the existing tennis courts in place that's on the north side of the park. And we are keeping the green space so we can continue to have the open air area for special events. We wanted to keep this park in its multi-use state. That is, we wanted to have something for everybody. We wanted a children's play area that expands the age groups, incorporate exercise equipment, seating and shading, passive areas and active areas, and of course, connectivity among all these elements. Walking you around the general site plan, we would like to keep the tot lot in its general location, as you can see on the right there. However, we would like to expand it for more play space and add a shaded bench seating area for picnics, as depicted with the blue rectangle. Moving towards the northerly portion of the park, just south of the tennis courts, we're looking to install a few pieces of exercise equipment. We intentionally spaced this away from the play equipment since we don't want young children to think that they are play pieces. We cross our fingers that that's going to be the case. However, keeping the connectivity and mobility in mind, we are proposing a walkway to move back and forth between these two areas, as you can see with the proposed sidewalk. Next slide, please. The main structure you see here features three types of slides, three types of climbing towers and poles, a hyperbolic climbing deck, as you see down there in the middle, it's a little difficult to see, but, a bridge, bongo perches, crunch station, hangarings and telescope. This inclusive equipment design incorporates play components that are accessible at the ground level, as well as elevated components that are accessible via transfer platforms. The existing sand and rubber surfacing will be removed and new poured-in-place rubber surfacing system will be installed throughout. The new service, surfacing system will allow for accessibility to play components, allow water to drain. to play components, allow water to drain to the adjacent grass areas, and help cushion falls. There's an inset on the top right there, which is a sample of the two post hip shade striker we're looking to install over the relocated picnic tables. Please keep in mind that this is only a rendering and not representative of the colors that will be used. The main structure will be surrounded by several freestanding pieces that will add eye catching and playful elements. Next slide, please. The freestanding play element equipment that you see up here was decided upon at the Recreation and Parks Committee meeting last year. Starting at the top right corner there is a playhouse for ages two to five. This piece is a whimsical design structure that gives kids a fun, open space where they can enjoy life as they want to imagine. To the left of that is a pirouette for ages two to 12, and we all know kids love to spin. And these pirouettes will give them that dizzy experience that they'll laugh and giggle about all day. What can you ask? What you know, what else could you ask for, right? Below that is what we call a ten spin. So this piece can accommodate up to 10 kids at a time, creating an interactive opportunity with children of all abilities to join them on the fun. And last but not least, you almost can't have a park without swings. So we included traditional swings in addition to an adaptive swing, as you can see on the bottom right, for more inclusive play. Next slide, please. And that brings us to the exercise stations. The the exercise stations that we're proposing will include equipment for upper and lower body workouts, and this will be funded by the Centennial Funds. A few of the the exercise equipment that we're proposing, starting with the top left there, is an accessible chest press. In the middle, we are proposing a four person lower body combo unit, and below that is a three person static combo. While we don't anticipate all these components to be used at the same time, the combo units are being proposed in order to provide a variety of exercise components within a smaller footprint. Next slide, please. If this project is awarded tonight, our first order of business would be to choose the color scheme and order the equipment. Based on current material lead times, you would expect to receive a delivery by summer. Once the equipment is received, you will start construction and expect completion around fall. So that concludes my update on the Heather Park Play Area Improvements Project, and welcome any questions you might have for me or for the Kaya team. Thank you.
Joe?
Are there any provisions for bicycles or drinking fountains or bathroom facilities?
Unfortunately, not at this moment. The funding that we've been provided is specifically for the upgrades of the playground area. And then we have the Centennial Funds that allows us to incorporate the exercise equipment.
Is there I mean, is there currently any like drinking fountains or?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And and it's just the basically the tot lot area kind of that.
Correct.
And the and the drinking fountain is somewhere somewhere else. Unfortunately, the costs have just skyrocketed. And so we had to just look at just basically a top just the play equipment replacement. We couldn't do like.
What you want.
Yeah, couldn't do what what everybody wants. But I appreciate Catherine's hard work on this. I you know, it it looks like, you know, you've you've thought hard, long and hard. And I know we've gotten input from the Parks and Rec Commission and and I've spoken with some of our residents, College Park East Neighborhood Association, who puts on this. This park is is our busiest park. I mean, College Park East Neighborhood puts on events here with hundreds of kids. There's sport practices here. There's groups of nannies and preschoolers every morning and and kids on the weekends and such. And so it's really, really well used. And so we tried to make sure that it wouldn't interfere with College Park East Neighborhood Association's activities and provide something for everyone. I still had I still had a couple of questions. I had put something in my newsletter in January that anybody that wanted to be updated or whatever. So if we got any, I I told people this that this would meeting a few people that this meeting would happen tonight. So if I receive any any input from following the meeting, is it okay to pass that on to you?
Of course.
And my my remaining concerns, we we have a a site plan that has the shade structure and another one with sales.
Yes.
I I don't know how we'll, you know, I don't know if they if they have questions about that. The questions that I had heard before had to do with sort of the longevity of the sales and if we'd have to come up with money. I'm not sure how long the the shades actual structure lasts compared to that. If is it mostly aesthetics? Or is is there a pro and a con to?
The fabric is a 10 year warranty on it. It's the fabric does have a 10 year warranty on it, and the steel structure is 25 years.
25 years? Okay.
So the fabrics are, you know, light fast and they're built to withstand the wind and any of the elements that are naturally in the area. They hold up very well. They're in probably every.
They're off the ground anyway. Okay. My my other question and most important question had to do with swings. And you've heard and you've heard me talk about swings. I couldn't tell from the pictures here if there were three swings or four swings included in the plan, because we have four swings right now, and I really don't want to decrease the number of swings.
Right. So based on Kai's proposal, we do have three belt swings and one adaptive swing.
So three belts.
So four total.
One. So one infant could swing at a time.
That's something that we're actually looking into to see if we can incorporate a toddler swing in the same bay as an adaptive swing, because I know we can't do a regular belt swing with a bucket seat. So that's something we're looking into right now.
I I've spoken with some of the nanny groups and they are some of the nanny people.
They have groups?
There's a group and they come down in a like a unit, a train thing and whatever. Anyway, there's a lot of a lot of preschoolers using this every morning. So and they were they were saying they could use more swings. So I just didn't want to decrease the decrease the number of swings. Every time I've visited, which has been a number of times over the last few months, and I see and I come in the mornings, they're either swinging or they're sitting playing in the sand. So I understand that there will be no sand. There's resilient surfacing. Is it would it be possible, maybe not part of this project, but maybe afterward, to make a little alcove, maybe at the north part under the tree or something where sandplay could happen? Or is it really going to get that much maintenance to keep it off the surfacing?
I'll go ahead and. Thank you for asking that question. There there's some pros and cons to that. Obviously, with sand next to play surfacing, the sand has a tendency of actually getting into the rubberized surfacing, and then they're really hardening it up and really taking the the squishiness away, if that's even a technical term. But also, what we're trying to avoid is similar situations that we see at other parks that has wood chips or sand, actually, where CPE in general has poor drainage and because of the expansive soils underneath. So when we do have rain, it has a tendency of actually puddling and pooling. So it it's really not really conducive to child's like for playground areas. So we're trying to move away from actually overall using of sand and wood chips, especially in the playground area.
Okay, I was just wondering if maybe we can have like a little slightly offset area. I I see them with their shovels and their in the strainers and the scooper, you know, just like at the beach you would play. And then today I went this morning and there were like little little cars, you know, and they were playing. So it it's I I understand now that we have the little house here that would add to the preschoolers, and I'm sure they would like the the merry go round. But anyway, that's what the use is now. So if I I just see that going away. So anyway, the 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 last question I had back to the site plan was that the adult exercise equipment is 14 and up. So it generally is for not for for small children. So they they were also, you know, expressing that it can be an attraction for kids and kids can run over there. So I've seen some of the other playgrounds that just put up a sign that says 14 and over. I wondered, you know, do we have there's a path connecting them? Is there any kind of anything that enhances the separation so that that maybe the I mean, I don't know how you keep the kids off of it, but.
Unfortunately, that falls onto the adults to try and.
Try to take care of the kids. Okay, I just don't want to. I don't want to get. I don't want to get in trouble for. Okay. All right. Are there any other any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Catherine, so much and look forward to finalizing the details before we order order it up and get moving. So.
And thank you, Mayor Sestarsik, for all your guidance. It's really helped with this project.
Well, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
And thank you. Okay, so we need a we need a motion. Let's see. Would you? Okay, I'll move. We accept.
I'll second.
Okay, can we please vote on your iPads? Okay. And that passes 5-0. All right.
I want a sandbox in there.
I know, I know. Okay, we have no unfinished or continued business, no new business. So I will adjourn the city council to Monday, March 11.
I think we still have an item.
Public hearing.
We still have an item?
The public hearing.
Oh, my gosh, we do. I'm thinking it's time to go, but it's not. Thank you for that. Okay, we do have a public hearing. Proposition 218 protest, public hearing, water rate and sewer adjustments. Can I turn this over to?
Iris Lee, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council and City Manager Ingram. I'm going to try to give this remote a try, just because I want to play around with it and see if it works or not. So Chief, if it doesn't work, I'm going to have to lean on you as well. So the item before you tonight is the continuance of the Water and Wastewater Utility Financial Plan and Rate Study Public Hearing that started on February 12, 2024. That was me. So we'll start off with a recap of a few takeaways that we heard. We'll summarize staff's recommendation to council. And if council so chooses, make a motion to conclude the public hearing. So our messaging regarding the utility fund started as early as the preparation of this current fiscal year's budget, where we're not able to adopt the Water Fund CIP due to negative cash flow. The budget was then adopted without a water CIP. We moved forward with looking at alternatives to fund the utilities without rate adjustments. However, we exhausted all options and needed to move forward with the rate adjustments. We heard from the community since and where the general takeaways, including from those that we gathered from public outreach, public comments, and other forms of correspondence, are shown on the slide before you. So these are our takeaways. Number one, the general need for more time to review and understand rates. This includes how the rate structure was adopted in 2021 and how it was derived. These rates form the foundation of those proposed rates before you and has not changed. What were the financial needs driving these increases? And of course, the CIPs, which account for a good portion of the expenditures? What we have done since the 2021 study and what what I'm sorry, and do we have the ability to deliver the CIPs moving forward to keep our system functional and reliable? Item number two, clarity on Leisure World Leisure World residents voting ability. In particular, how are the shareholders protests counted compared to, say, a single family residential unit outside of Leisure World? Number three, the general need for more public outreach and opportunities for interested parties to learn more. And then number four, the need to make sure that impacted parties are aware to notice and knows to review these important documents. To provide further clarity on Prop 218 procedures, especially when it comes to Leisure World, one of the recommendations tonight is to adopt 218 proceeding procedures specifically for water and sewer service charges. It first defines what customer customer of record identified parcels, proposed increases, and record owner means and how they relate to these proceedings. It moves on to specifying who is eligible to file a written protest, which in this case is either a customer of record or record owner of foreign identified parcel. It further clarifies who would be eligible if an owner is not shown on the assessment roll, or if a property is held in a trust, corporation, partnership, community partnership, joint Tennessee, joint Tennessee, et cetera. The procedure also underscores the submission of written protest procedures, which must be done by either mail or delivered in person to the city clerk's office. Only protests received prior to the conclusion of the public hearing would be counted, and written protests may be withdrawn should the originator make a written request prior to the close of the public hearing. A majority protest exists if written protests received and not withdrawn represents over 50% of the identified parcels, subject to water charge or sewer charge. If a majority protest exists, then city council will not approve the proposed increase. If a majority protest does not exist, then city council may consider adopting the proposed increase. There are further questions on how written protests would be counted for Leisure World. Leisure World is made up of 16 residential communities consisting of 15 stock communities and one condominium association. There's only one customer of record, and in this case, the Golden Rain Foundation. As the only customer of record, Golden Rain Foundation may submit a written protest for one or more of the identified parcels. Each record owner within Leisure World can also submit a written protest for one or more of the identified parcels owned by the record owner. As of today, there are 249 parcels in Leisure World, consisting of 109 parcels in Mutual 1 through 12, 14 to 16, skipping Mutual number 13, 126 condominium units in Mutual 17, and 14 parcels owned by Golden Rain Foundation, which includes the clubhouse and general areas. The 109 parcels owned by the 15 different record owners, meaning the 15 different mutuals, sorry, excuse me, they're owned by 15 different mutuals. Each mutual may submit a written protest for one or more of the identified parcels owned by the respective mutual. Residents of mutuals are considered shareholders. Shareholders may submit written comments regarding the proposed increase prior to the closing of the public hearing. However, since a shareholder is not considered a customer of record or record owner in accordance to Prop 218, comments submitted by shareholders are not counted in determining the existing of a majority existence of a majority protest, excuse me. With respect to Mutual 17, each record owner of a condominium unit may submit a written protest on behalf of their respective unit, as each unit is considered a separate parcel. And these procedures are quite lengthy, and we will be posting them on the utility rate website for everybody's reference. So based on the comments we've heard so far, including those from the February 12 public hearing, staff considered carefully how to address these comments. It is believed that these comments are best addressed by closing the public hearing tonight and concluding the pending majority majority protest process. Sorry. Set a new public hearing date for May 13, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Direct staff to renotice the community to include water, sewer customers, owners, Leisure World shareholders about the hearing, whether or not it's part of the 218 required noticing requirements, and whether or not the individuals protest would count towards the process. Staff also recommends adopting the procedures for the conduct of a public hearing and majority protest proceedings related to proposed increase of water and sewer service charges, where these procedures recommend counting the already received protest letters towards the new majority protest process unless unless the originator requests to resend the letter. As we have more than two months from now till the proposed hearing of May 13, we are looking to conduct two rate study open house. One on Thursday, April 11 at 6:00 PM and the other at Saturday on Saturday, April 13 at 10:30 AM. Both that will will be held here in council chambers. These are opportunities to have to have face to face conversation and get those last questions answered. I would highly. I would highly encourage the public to take advantage of these resources that are available to learn about why this is important, what we must do to continue providing you these essential services, how these rates were derived, and what these rates can and cannot fund. We want you to understand why we are fighting hard for you. We also avail, we are also available through various channels, such as the dedicated phone line, email address, social media, and our rate study website. We're here for the public, we have the public's best interest in mind, and we want the public to be engaged. So this concludes my presentation, and I would like to thank you for your time.
Okay, are there any council comments?
I have comments after the public.
After the public, okay. I will now reopen the public hearing that was opened on February twelfth and continued to tonight, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty four. We'll take any remaining public comments, then close the public hearing, conclude the pending majority protest process for the water and sewer rates adjustment, and take no further action to adopt the rate adjustment pursuant to the pending process. At the conclusion of the hearing, council will reconsider adopting Resolution seventy-four ninety-six to set a new public hearing to consider the proposed water and sewer rates adjustment and associated rate study and authorize the city manager to notify customers and record owners of the proposed water and sewer rate adjustment in accordance with Proposition two eighteen, and consider adopting Resolution seventy-four ninety-seven to adopt procedures applicable to the conduct of the public hearing majority protest proceedings. Are there any public here, if there are any public comments, all speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and the entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review shall be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on the public hearing? Okay, come on up, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I know you said not to talk to the staff, but I want to say hi to Jill. My wife and Jill went to college together, so I always heard good, heard good things. And yeah, around that time, I was probably into my thirtieth year in city government, and I was a city manager at the time. Began my career in public works, and during my career, I authored four measures that were passed, but they were voted on. But whenever, there were times when I would get into situations where people would complain about rates and things like that, whether it was even business persons. Sometimes my recommendations to the city council over my thirty-year career as a city manager would be to see if you could spread it out. I mean, it's, it's obvious that water, water rates and water improvements are needed. I live in College Park East. I live on Hazelnut between, well, where Heather Park is you're talking about. That looks like a great project, really looking forward to that. And Guava, and I know some years ago, it seemed like they were doing something on Guava, but we too have had the water from inside, actually inside our garage, our house. Thanks for the sandbags, we do appreciate the sandbags. We've been here twenty-two years. Prior to that, we were twenty-two years in Downey. And my son was, he transferred from Downey High to, to Los Alamos. He had kind of a sense of humor. He called our street Rio de Hazelnut, that you needed a boat. And you almost do, because my neighbor next door, we're on the corner, when I first came here, he was, he was stuck on Guava. And he told me, he says, he made the mistake, so he, he told me, go around, go around the, the corner there. So anyhow, and my, my last time as a, working for city government was, I was the interim city manager of Los Alamos, and I really appreciated the, especially with the, working with, with Jill and with everybody with the communications, the police communication center. I did that, and then I stayed another years acting labor negotiator, but really respect everything that you do here. And I was just wondering if there's a way, because you hear about it being a hundred and forty percent increase in a thousand dollars a year, so over four years, it'll be four thousand. Does that mean the other amount that we're already paying is a thousand, so that'd be like eight thousand dollars right there? Just, I don't know, it just was effective for me in my career, and I tried doing this before, too, this fifty percent. I looked at that, well, recommended to the city council, and we ended up doing something. We did ballot measures and were, were successful, although my last one was only forty, forty votes, but it was forty votes to pass it, so that was, that was good during my career. But just saying, if it is, I know you're going to do a bond or something, but if there was a way to spread it out, so that would, that would only be my question, basically, knowing that you need to do the improvements. And that's kind of like how I would do it when it was my career, when I would do these tax measures, say that in one case, it was to hire more police officers, firefighters, code enforcement folks. And so we were able to get community acceptance. But, but other times, that would be the way to, see if you, if you could do it that way, if it's possible to spread it out. Thanks.
Would you mind sharing your name with us?
Ray Cordner.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
I'm old, I have to use my glasses. My name's James Jensen, and I'm going to start on a positive note by thanking Lisa for being a fantastic councilwoman in our area. She's very available, and that's appreciated by all us residents. I've been a proud Seal Beach resident for almost seventy years, and in that time, some things stayed the same, but some sadly haven't. This used to be a town proud of being small and unlike our big city neighbors, and in fact, got rid of public officials who tried to overbuild around the beach. The city operated like an old-school family, cautious with spending, avoiding debt, and taking care of residents as a priority. Somewhere along the way, we started making big mistakes and trying to be like our big famous neighbor cities, and I think that's where things started going wrong. Even though most of the country has a volunteer fire department like we used to have, we felt the need to be the best city in the world to be a fireman, and began paying top dollar for what essentially are part-time employees who we house in the state-of-the-art resort-style facilities. We also reward them with fantastic retirements. They can begin far younger than most, and what do the citizens get? Here's my experience. I took a fall a couple of years back at the Seal Beach Tennis Center. I will blame it on my clumsiness and not on the courts that have cracks and uneven surfaces, which many visiting players complain about, but I digress. It was a bad fall. I broke my nose and had a concussion. Someone called the fire department, and the paramedics showed up. I met them when I was leaving the facility, and even though another player offered to take me to the hospital, they thought that I should go with them. It wasn't until I got the fifteen hundred dollar bill from the private ambulance they put me in a couple of weeks later for the mile and a half trip out to Los Alamos that I realized they didn't put me in the back of the paramedic wagon. They put me into an ambulance, I guess they had called, and probably sends money to the city for the referral. So we contribute a lot, we've got a great fire department, I'm a citizen, taxpayer, and what do I get? The bill. A couple of years earlier, I had a kidney stone in a store in Westminster. Their paramedics came, picked me up, took me to the same hospital, gave me some morphine on the way, because it's kind of painful having a kidney stone. I never got a bill. That's, I guess, how their paramedics work for even their non-citizens. You know, all advertising is hurt and rescue, from fifteen-second radio ads to half-hour infomercials, and that's what we're getting. Pipes are old and cruddy, could break, could give you service interruptions and worse. Give us money. My issue is this shouldn't be news, you know? We've got high-paid government officials, and, and they get treated really well with good pay, days off, lots of perks. And the reason we do this is so that they can help us avoid these things when they come up, the inevitable things. Otherwise, we could have, you know, placeholders in these jobs and saying, we need more money, more taxes. But we hire the best, hoping that they can navigate us away from these things. You know, we got screwed a few years back when, instead of acting like our neighbor of Long Beach, which they always say, we want to be like the neighbors, they decided that the sewer line that they installed from the center of the street to our properties is now our responsibility. Several of my neighbors on Catalina have paid thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars to fix the sewer line, and in insult to injury, have had to pay for a city permit to fix the city's sewer line. You know, I'm doing what I wish the city hall would do, or people here would do, is I buy insurance now. Every month, I pay insurance on my sewer line, so that inevitably, when it goes bad, I have someone to help me out with that thirteen to fifteen thousand dollar expense to fix that sewer line, that you don't have to do in Long Beach or the other neighboring cities. You know, it's inevitable these things are going to get bad, and we should plan for them. It shouldn't be a surprise. We have to do that with our homes. You know, we follow the state rules on conserving water, and instead of being rewarded, we get a bill.
You have thirty seconds to wrap up.
Okay, we're told we, we didn't use enough water, and we sell water here. In fact, the water we're selling pays for a lot of the salaries for the people that we hire, so it's important that we have big water bills. So, you know, it's like damned if you do, damned if you don't. I just think that raising fees on a community with many people like myself that are senior citizens, retired, another hundred bucks is tough. I think the city needs to do what they're asking us to do, which is tighten their belts and rebudget.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
I'm sorry, my name is Siriporn Higgins. It's S I R I P O R N, Siriporn, and last name Higgins. I'm sorry, this thing's stuck in my hearing aid. First is, I would like to sincerely thank, I'm not, I know I'm not supposed to address the city staff, so through the mayor or the city council, I sincerely thank the city staff who works with the G I F. and qualifying or modifying the number of the parcel owner who can submit the protest letter. I hope that we get a better number, but for now, I think that's something that we will live with. And I think at this time, we have to focus on how to make this work between the city, the council members, and the citizen. Giving us more time to study the proposal, I think it would work to, for the citizen to assess the impact on financially, and we can make an informed decision to, you know, be on board with the rate increase. So I hope that the member allow for more time for the public hearing. The proposal that the city staff put in, I, I think it's reasonable, it's workable, and it's a responsible proposal. As far as the rate increase, as I said before, the inflation rate is three point two percent. The social security benefit COLA is three point two. So when you look at a hundred forty percent increase for the five years, starting with thirty-three percent on the second year after this year increase, it, it's not realistic, it's not workable. The average social security benefit received around eighteen hundred a month. Our association do cable, landline, phone, electrical bill come to about eight hundred. You're not, and then you're looking at the bedding care premium, transportation, insurance, food, medication, out-of-pocket, it's not workable. So is there a way for the city and the members to look at and recalibrate what is the urgent need in, on the deferred maintenance that you can start with? And maybe incrementally go look at it every two years, instead of just put in the five year at a hundred forty percent? I think that is more responsible and realistic. And you might, you know, get, it might get passed easier than just, just dump a hundred and forty percent on the current population. I think it's unfair. It's not your responsibility for the negligent in the past a hundred year that nobody take care of the infrastructure, but at the same time, it's not responsible either to have us take care of a hundred percent of the negligent. The other issue is, is there a way for the city to look at the budget and focus on anything that has to do with safety and, and health and safety of the public, and forego any project that we can do without? As a citizen, we also have to look at our budget. Right now, my family, we cut down on any expend, as far as travel, trip, we don't do anything, we do not dine out, we cut any spending locally or otherwise in preparation of this increase. So I think both sides have to do, have to take responsibility to prepare for this problem. So lastly is, I'm not, I'm speaking for myself.
You have thirty seconds to wrap up.
When you look at the unintended consequence, when you post this much of a rate on the citizen, we're going to have to cut it down somewhere. So you might raise revenue from the rate increase, but you're going to see a drop from the business income, the, and, and any spending that, that we will spend on the business and the commercial side of the, of the city. So if you could, please take that into consideration, and again, thank you very much for your time and, and for the city who reached out to G I F. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I want to take this opportunity to thank whoever it was in the city attorney's office that spoke directly with Golden Rain Foundation's Finance Department to finally obtain facts about Leisure World's ownership structure, in particular, identifying record owners of parcels, which is the qualifying factor to participate in Proposition two eighteen protest letter writing. So no more disinformation, please, since Leisure World actually has two hundred and forty-nine votes, as the city attorney described protest letters at the last meeting. I am concerned with your Resolution seven four nine seven regarding Proposition two eighteen, which adopts additional protest proceeding requirements specifically for Leisure World qualified participants. Exhibit A, Section B two, B four, and B five require the two hundred and forty-nine eligible participants to submit documents in a form that is satisfactory to the city attorney in order to establish their qualifications for participation. In the resolution, the city attorney should be required to respond promptly to persons submitting protest letters, especially since if their documents are unsatisfactory, then their protest letter won't count. Perhaps the Proposition two eighteen official notice for Leisure World could include a list of documents that the city attorney would find acceptable, like wills, deeds, trusts, et cetera. Besides including the qualified participants from Leisure World, I think staff also needs to seek out other qualified participants who did not receive any notice. It is my understanding that some ratepayers who lease from property owners may not have received such required notice. Consultant Raftelli's transmit a letter dated December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, stated the majority study objective includes developing financial plans for the water and wastewater enterprise to ensure revenue is sufficient to pay for operation and maintenance and capital investment. That charge was to develop financial plans, that's plural with an S. During the council discussion on the plan, Council Member Moore indicated that Long Beach was proposing a nine percent was proposing a nine percent rate increase. The staff proposed increase is a hundred and forty percent. He asked for a more realistic plan. At this point, staff is not presenting any planned choices to this council for consideration. Did staff just expect you to rubber stamp whatever plan they plopped down in front of you, no questions asked? Staff is bemoaning their poor planning when pointing out approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars in rate revenue that would not be collected because of this additional forty-five delay. They also cite sixty thousand dollar cost for the Proposition 218 renoticing. At the December eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, your consultant indicated the first step in Proposition 218 process is to identify the parcels subject to change. May I suggest this lost potential revenue and cost to re-notify parcel owners equalling four hundred thousand dollars is not the fault of the fourteen folks who showed up in opposition to this unrealistic plan at your last meeting. In the letter to the editor sections of recent publications, Seal Beach and Leisure World residents were advised no less than eight times that the council was relying on so-called experts, highly-paid consultants, professionals with years of experience, and especially city staff that were telling you what you needed to do to save Seal Beach from catastrophic system failures, pollution fines, inability to issue future capital project bonds, and other fearful issues. These issues and the lost potential revenue, again, is not the fault of fourteen folks who showed up with thoughtful comments, heartfelt comments, technical comments, factual comments, and spoke in opposition to this unrealistic plan. Again, I direct your attention to the city manager's contract that requires an annual evaluation of employees' performance on or before March first of each year. Since there has not been such an evaluation for numerous years, it's really, really past due for you to conduct that evaluation for the benefit of other city employees, and most importantly, in the interest of your constituents.
Truce Miller, Old Town. I was at the December eleventh meeting and the January eighteenth open house and the twenty-sixth meeting, all of the meetings that we had. At the January eighteenth open house, I did have the opportunity to speak with the consultant and ask him questions firsthand, one of which was, were there any other options that you came up with or presented to the staff? And he said yes. Where are they? We haven't seen anything. We see one, there's one option in here, and it is the hundred and forty percent increase, which is unacceptable. It doesn't, it doesn't have, any other city in the, as closest as our neighbors, have that kind of rate increase, and like a couple other people said, it's just way over and above. We've asked, on February twelfth, I think, we walked out of here asking for a list of things for the staff and to, and the city to respond to, and what we were looking for were some alternatives. You know, a hundred and forty percent is a lot of money. Even now, I have a neighbor that lives across the street from me who doesn't know how she's going to spend the additional twenty-five percent increase in the water rate that she just received in January one. Also, there's no end in sight. I looked at the two thousand nineteen, the two thousand, and before that, the rate hike increases. There's no, you know, you've got, you've got your numbers going out to twenty thirty. You know, there's no end in the twenty percent cap, there is no cap on this, and it just can't, you can't sustain, it's unfair to us, the residents who live here and work here, to always shoulder that responsibility. You know, the sixty, the sixty thousand dollar, you know, reassessment. When I look back at two thousand nineteen, you did, you know, there's forty-six, seventy-six resident household ratepayers that are identified in that, in one Leisure World. Obviously, that's a problem because you're asking to go back and re-notice, which is kind of funny, because we pointed that out in the first meeting, that there was an issue with noticing. Having people that we know of that live on, or that own buildings on Main Street with a tenant that pays the water bill, and they did not get the water bill, or get the water notice for this. So I think we are asking, not, it's not out of hand or out of line, we're asking you to go back and find out another way, slow it down, and, and, you know, to do what you need to do. And, you know, I got this today in the water that says investing in our future. It started out, and I think the last speaker said she's right, it started out with the scare tactics. Oh, my gosh, we're gonna, you know, have all this, we need all this money for the infrastructure. Then it went to the consultant, who basically said, no, we need the money in the reserves for the bond that's about to happen, and now we're being asked to, you know, invest. All the, you know, materials that you're printing are costly, you know, stop, just stop it. Go back and figure out a way to, to make some of these, these repairs and things that you need. I mean, listening to the people with the, in Ironwood, it took ten years and nothing's been done? You should be embarrassed, every one of you who had any part in that. That is unacceptable. Thank you.
I think sandboxes are way more fun.
Thank you.
I agree. Patty Senical, I live in College Park East, and I just have a couple of quick comments. So first of all, thank you for coming up with the dates. Whoever did that for April, having the rate study sessions, great idea. Thank you, really appreciate that. I would also just like to comment, though, that the renoticing of the sixty thousand dollars for that, it looks like we're having the study session but trying to still move forward a month later. And my opinion, it would be, we need to not re-notice, do the study sessions, take all that information in, because the more we can, information we can get out there, and the more input you get from the people who need to, or will be paying these bills, I think it helps the process move along. And so having more input, having the study sessions, taking all that information in, I think we need to hold off re-noticing. So what if we find out a whole bunch of new stuff on the eleventh and the thirteenth, and we have to re-notice again? So I would say, hold off on re-noticing, do your study sessions, let the council digest what they're hearing, and then move forward when it's timely for the re-noticing. Another thing is, I know there were a lot of protest letters in, I don't know how many, we haven't heard, or kind of the buckets of the concerns that need to be addressed. So I think that would be something for the study session. How many letters came in? I know it didn't meet the threshold to stop, but still, it's concerns from residents that weren't able to come, and so I think that's something that could be part of the study session. The other thing is, for the study session, is maybe there's a way for your, I know you use grant consultants and stuff, maybe they can look into this stuff from EPA. This is a lot of money coming into California, a lot, and we need to be first up and put our hands out. And so maybe in the study session, even if it's just some general information, is it doable, is it not? Or what could we do, just, you know, let's take advantage of this? Because, I mean, every city's going to be going after this money, and I would love to see us get up there first in line. So that could be something for the study session. So just, you know, my closing, closing thought is, I think we're not ready to re-notice. That's a lot of money in case we have to do it again. Do the study sessions, take all the information in, and continue the outreach, and then let's just get it right. And I think if we can show, we all know about useful life. Our houses, we know things break, and there's got to be improvements. There's nothing more important than, well, public safety, but also infrastructure. So I think this is a good opportunity to really explain what's going on, because we hear so much misinformation. So I want to just thank you for however this idea came forward to do the study sessions. I think it's really important. So I'll end there. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
I just think the water thing, like you need to break it down to the physical thing you want to do with the funds. Like show a diagram or something, because you're just talking about all these monies and all these grants and all this stuff. It's just like you're talking about things that aren't concrete, physical things. Like show diagrams of why it costs fifty million dollars to fix the thing on Ironwood. Show these pipes what needs to be fixed specifically within the pipe. And for the Heather project, I really think that you should consider cutting the budget for that in half or something, and building a convenience store that'll actually generate revenue. And I really would like something within walking distance, because I have to drive all the way to either Garden Grove, so we lose money through taxes, or I have to drive all the way to the Target Center. For the pipes too, there's like these new techniques we got done at our house, this technique where you have this liquid plastic PVC-type material that you put in the pipe, and then you put a balloon in it and expand it to hit the walls, and then when it dries, it dries as a smaller pipe, but it's like perfectly within there. And you don't have to dig up all the ground, which costs ton of money, and recover the pipes and all that stuff. And there's 3D printing these days, like I would really suggest looking into stuff like that. And really, to the residents, like most of these, these fees are like, like fifty dollars, like you're to a hundred for the average resident, I think, like, or a hundred fifty, maybe, I forget. But it's like, we're talking about a hundred bucks a month or less for most people, which you don't pay any HOA fees or nothing like that, so I don't know, it's kind of crazy getting so mad. I don't know. But the concrete diagrams specifically showing what is the issue would really help, and because you just throw out these numbers, and it's just like, okay, like it's a bunch of managers talking about something that they don't put their hands on. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Our second question?
He's already had an opportunity to speak, so it's up to the, to your discretion.
Do you want to let him ask a question?
We don't share time, we don't share time.
Does anybody else want to speak?
We can't hear from the audience.
Who hasn't? Does anybody who hasn't spoken wish to speak? Okay, I will close, I'm gonna now close the public hearing, okay. Okay. Now, is there any council comments? No.
It's the motion we're under consideration.
The motion under consideration.
I just noticed that we're down a council member.
Yeah.
Is he gone?
Yes.
You want to give, you know, you can start entertaining debate, but you may have to repeat yourself if you get too far into the.
If we get too far along, okay.
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Nathan, do you have comments?
No, we're going to be discussing the motion, which is to reopen the public hearing. It was open in February twelfth. We're talking about continuing it to April, so I want to understand what it is we're voting on.
We're voting on, okay.
The staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution 7496 and 7497. 7496 would conclude the current majority protest process and call, direct staff to re-notice a new majority protest process, and schedule the public hearing for that on May thirteenth. And then Resolution 7497 would adopt procedures applicable to the conduct of that public hearing.
But we're keeping the protest letters that we already have.
Yes, the staff report says that, the notice will say that. If anyone has already submitted a protest on behalf of their parcel, whether you're a record owner, or you're the customer directly responsible for the bill, if you submitted a protest, the city is going to continue, keep that protest, and count it as if it was submitted as part of this new majority protest process.
Those are still good.
You don't have to submit another one, and it's still only one protest per parcel.
One protest per parcel, okay. Councilman Moore, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I met with staff earlier today, I was gonna suggest a planning meeting with the entire council, maybe one day prior to the next public hearing, just to review the CIP projects in detail. So we can ask questions, go through each of them, and see what's really needed, so. I'd also like to get the city's bond expert to come in, explain how bonds work, what's really needed there, explain the one point two ratio needed, and then have a general discussion among the council. So I'd like to suggest that we do that.
Do you need a motion for something like that?
I mean, if the council's direction is to schedule a special meeting, you don't necessarily need a motion. If everyone consents to a special meeting, if they have a date in mind, you could schedule it now if you wanted.
Just before April?
Yeah, before the public hearing.
Lisa, do you have comments?
Yes. So kind of like with, you know, your town hall for College Park East, I really think that having a special meeting where we're just discussing water, wastewater rates with council and the public, where we can have further discussions, some of the items that Councilmember Moore has pointed out, having the bond person there explain how that works, the CIP projects that have been funded but not completed, you know, just an overview of certain items that we would want to talk about during that special council meeting. So I think I would like to make a motion to wait on the noticing, postpone that until we have our town halls and the special study session, so the residents have an opportunity to really ask questions, hear more information about what this encompasses. And then also, so if, regarding, you know, the parameters of this special session, do we need to, do I need to call that out now, or is it something that we can work with staff on, you know?
So you can, in terms of the agenda for that special meeting, I mean, the mayor can work with Jill, and the council can work with Jill to add items to that agenda. That doesn't need to happen tonight.
Do we have to say if it's, it's, because a study session would let the public have multiple times to speak, is it, is it, can we, does that?
The format can really be whatever you want. It will be a special meeting regardless, in terms of how we notice it under the Brown Act, but, you know, how you want to structure it is really up to the council.
Okay, so, but we don't have to say that right now? I'd prefer it just to be so there's a lot of conversation can go on and not so structured, so that we can, they can ask whatever questions they want to ask.
I think it would be a good idea, while everybody's talking about it, to provide Jill directions, so that she knows how to agenda, angendize it, if you're ready to do that now.
Yeah, I mean, I think a regular meeting where the, the public can speak at the beginning, maybe beginning and the end, and we can talk as a council, since the Brown Act, we can't talk to more than two people, so it's nice to be able to talk to each other in public, and then be able to, you know, talk about, you know, is this CIP project, what is it due, why is it necessary, what's the history? And, and if we go through each one, I feel a lot more better about, you know, forty-seven million dollars of bonds that we're about to vote on.
I would just prefer that, that they, like, they get to speak at the beginning and the end, because sometimes in the beginning, they don't, haven't seen the presentation or the discussion, so I would like to hear from them at the end also, when, you know, what their opinions of the meeting are, so is that something we can do?
Of course.
Okay.
Do we have consensus?
Is that consensus then? Does that sound?
I honestly, I'm happy, I'm happy that my Leisure World neighbors have an opportunity to vote in this process. I'm. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the infrastructure in this city. I'm concerned that we've had three, three water main breaks in just the last few months. I have, I'm certainly amenable to going through the list of every single one of these projects that's being proposed in this project, but we've already had a chance to see that. It's already been out there, I believe, has it not? So, I mean, we can do it again, which is what, what it sounds like to me that we're doing here. We're just doing what we've been doing for the last five months. So, but I'm happy to do it in the public. I would be happy to have a special meeting, if that's what the panel wants.
Well, an example, just to respond to that, is the Leisure World rehabilitation pump. I mean, that, that's $5 million, but if we rebuild the other three pumps, is that really necessary? So that's the kind of discussion I'd like to have at this meeting.
Okay.
Can I just take in everything I've heard, and I'll read it back to you, tell me if that's your motion, Councilmember Landau. So the, the motion would be to terminate the current majority protest process, call a special meeting on a date where the council is available to discuss the CPI projects and bond financing. The public will be given an opportunity to speak at the beginning and end of that special meeting, and the council will defer calling the special hearing and noticing, excuse me, calling the public hearing and noticing that public hearing for the proposed rates until after that special meeting has occurred.
Correct. Is it after the?
After the special meeting.
After the special meeting, or after the public, well, it's okay.
After the special meeting.
All right.
Do you want it restated, Councilmembers?
I want to see it in writing.
You've got my chicken scratch.
Sounds like there are multiple steps in that.
Gloria, did you catch that, and are you able to put it up there?
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
There's two town halls and the special session.
Okay, so you want it after the special, after the last one?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought you wanted, okay.
Yeah. The public hearing and, and re-notice until after the special meeting.
Did you, did you want to, okay, I'm not sure what clear, which meeting it was after, the, the meeting that's before the, the special meeting that's before the?
No, I'm not sure if that's going to show up.
I mean, to be honest, at this point, nothing's commending you to adopt the resolution, scheduling the public hearing, so really you can do that whenever you want.
I just wanted to make sure she, she was happy with what she, what her timing was, so.
That'll have to be done at a regular meeting sometime after that, that special meeting.
After the residents have time to digest all this.
Look it all, okay, okay, I think it's good, okay. All right, do we have consensus? Do you have questions?
Do we have a, we don't have a second on that motion?
We don't have a second, okay, we still have, okay, Tom seconded, do we have a?
I thought it was his motion. Wasn't that your motion, Tom?
No, it was Lisa's.
Or that was your motion?
It was Lisa's.
I just had a question of logistics. If, if we're planning to have public comment before and public comment after, and we're going to go through each of the CIP items in depth, plus the financing end of it in depth, are we prepared for a rather long meeting? I stay up late, so I'm okay, but.
Well, this is the only thing that we're going to be discussing, so.
It could be all, during the day or something. It could be what? During the day, I'll, I'll take a vacation there.
I think it's important that we see alternatives to the 140%, just explore that and.
I understand that. I'm just saying, are we prepared to spend as much time at one sitting to go through everything that we've been asking questions about with regard to what's been proposed and have public comment before and after the meeting? The public comment before the meeting, I'm guessing, would be fairly similar to what we've been hearing from the public up to this point. The public comment after, I don't know, I mean, it could be that you didn't, we don't believe what you just discussed, or we still don't think you're coming up with any alternatives or whatever. That's all I'm saying.
We could limit, we can limit the time a little bit, if, you know, like, three minutes or something, so that they're more concise, but, or ask them, you know, to maybe wait till after to, till they hear what they hear, but.
Whatever your pleasure.
I'd like to not, not limit the public if they want to speak, so.
I will say that the mayor can adopt reasonable restrictions on the amount of time and for each public speaker and the total amount of time devoted to public comment. So I, but you can do that based on how many people are in the audience and wanting to speak, so you can know how long you're going to be at the meeting.
So we, do we have any more council discussion? We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Tom, did you have anything else?
No.
No? Nathan, you're done?
Are we, are we stopping the process that we've been in and starting the clock all over again, and is that what's happening here?
You are stopping the current process, and, but you're not tonight, according to this motion, starting the clock on the new process.
So the April dates that were up on the screen there, those don't apply in this?
The April dates, I believe, were just the workshops, so I assume staff is planning to continue to hold those. What wouldn't happen is that May 13th public hearing is not going to be held, because you couldn't hold it on May 13th, because you have, you have to wait 45 days after sending the public hearing notice before holding the notice, and if we're not sending that out until after the special meeting that hasn't been scheduled yet, I assume it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to hit May 13th.
From a practical matter, we're talking about July now?
It kind of depends on when that special year, meeting is held. If you want to aim for a month, then we can give you an approximate date on when the next council meeting would be, where you can adopt that resolution to schedule the public hearing.
Okay.
I have no idea what we're voting for here, so.
Okay, are we going to call the question then, or we have another comment, or you want to, okay, all right, let's, we have a motion, a second, so we vote? Okay.
Lisa, I seconded.
Tom is the second.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Calhoun, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Sustar, say how you vote?
Yes.
I have no idea.
Okay, now we have no unfinished business or new business, and we move on to adjourn the city council to Monday, March 11th, 2024, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you for hanging in there. Bye, everybody.